Join for the pledge of allegiance.
I, we manage space in America. It's a very quality, it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice.
Welcome to the August sixteenth, uh, select board meeting. Do we have any citizen statements and petitions? Oh. Yeah, no, it's on the, well, it's on the, uh, well, this is.
It's not for that.
Yeah.
Bob Sweet, fifty Milford Street. Recently I built a house and um, I have a video I want to show you with. It's a concern that I have uh, with a sign that's on kind of button pop. It's when I come through my driveway to look to get on to Route sixteen. When I look to the left, there's, there's some legs bank and some weeds and stuff like that. There's nothing that can be done about that, I'm sure. When I look to the right, there's a sign that's about four feet by eight and it's probably four feet off the road. So it compares my vision to be able to see anything coming up the hill. So my, my question is, is can somebody take a look at this to see if anything can be done about it before there's an accident on Route sixteen due to something that could be a problem?
Sure, that's, that's an easy answer. It's the, it's the zoning enforcement officer, which right now is the building inspector. Cause we have zoning bylaws that, that, uh, you know, govern the, that govern the signs. So, you know, sign size, sign placement. Also, if it's a traffic issue, you can, you can speak with the chief of police. And it, well, you know, we're not gonna, we, we don't need to get into that here. The, the, the proper venue is to speak with the zoning enforcement officer, which is in the building department. Okay.
I'd like to bring it up to this.
Did he, did he respond to you?
They're gonna look into it.
Okay. I would also call the, if it's a, if it's a traffic issue, I would also call the chief of police. And have, have the, have the police department check, cause if it's, if it hinders visibility, it's a traffic problem. They can take steps to mediate.
Okay. That's, that's really, that's why I want to make sure that everybody that comes to my house is safe. And everybody on the street is safe from anybody exiting.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I think having heard that, I think you're kind of saying, excuse me, just have it all set up. If it's raised to us here, I think we should probably put together.
David, I'm sorry. I'm just suggesting that we finally ask the building commissioner and the chief.
Yeah.
Get back to us, since it was raised here, we might as well.
Yeah, the town administrator's, town administrator making a note. He'll send it to the, because right now, you know, we don't have a separate um, zoning enforcement officer. So it's the building, it falls to the building inspector, so he's wearing a few different hats. But we'll make sure the town administrator follows up with him and gets an answer.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mister Chair.
Yes, yes.
Can I intercede a little bit? Uh, uh, we actually do have a zoning enforcement officer. It's Dylan Lindholm. And I know that she's gotten Bob's complaint or concern. And I obviously haven't talked to her in a week about it, maybe a little more. But she was looking into where the sign's located and whose property it's on, et cetera. That's the best I can tell you.
Okay, so it is being addressed?
Yes.
All right. Well, we'll make sure again that it gets answered to us, so that we'll have, hopefully we'll have an answer in our next meeting. With an action item, okay?
Sounds like a plan.
All right, thanks, Jack. I don't see we have any correspondence. We need a little bit of feedback going on. Can we turn this down a little bit? I don't believe we have any correspondence.
We do not.
So um, next up is the uh, rock the block applications to the uh, Mendham Brothers, the Breath Association for an alcohol license and actually permission to actually uh, host the event up at the town park. Who is uh, great.
So uh, the alcohol license has been submitted on behalf of the brothers of the brush. We're looking for a one day liquor license. Uh, we, we did this last year as well. We're bringing in Atlas Distributing Beer Trailer. Uh, all the people that will be serving and handling the alcohol will be tip certified. And we will be carrying liability insurance on, on this event.
Okay, now that, that, there was a question, just because when we, when this event was done last year, it was actually hosted by the town. And we had um, you know, had essentially saved money to do this, but then there were sponsors and, and we, we had been told that, you know, because of the outpouring, everybody who wanted to be involved, there was no need for the, for the town's money. So um, is this, and maybe you don't know the answer to this, is the, are the brothers actually hosting this event?
So this is, the Rock the Block is hosted by a separate committee. The brothers is specifically looking for the alcohol license. It's the only, the only thing we have to do with the event is the liquor license and serving the alcohol.
Okay, so you're looking for a motion just to approve the one day liquor license?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
It's my understanding that the uh, committee that is sponsoring the event or coordinating the event have already approached the parks department. Is they have uh, the authority granted to use that property. Of my understanding, generally the board of selectmen is in control of all town property. And when I originally put the motion together, I included that part in it since to give it out.
Okay.
And I do know that uh, there's food trucks involved in this event and they have been sending their permits to the board health.
Right, right, that would always happen.
Mister Chair does a hand up.
Is that?
Hey guys. Um, I just wanted to answer your question, Mike, with regards to some of the financial aspects of this particular event. So um, we have funding in um, the special events accounts that are going to help kick this event off as it relates to deposits um, and things like that. And I'm working closely with some of the leaders um, within the committee. Um, the volunteer, the group of volunteers to track donations against our expenditures. Um, and so that's, that's how this event is going to be funded is through a small subsidy of the special events account that is currently in our budget alongside of donations from uh, residents and, and other, other willing parties.
Does anybody have any questions?
Is this the same committee that um, drove it last year?
Yeah.
For the most part, I think maybe someone on it.
I didn't know if that committee had an expiration date or is it perpetual?
Well, it's not, it's not, it's, it's not a town committee.
It's just a committee.
Yeah.
So at some point, we would need to authorize expenditures from the account that Jody.
That's, that's what I was getting at.
Yeah.
Right, because my, my explanation was that, my understanding was that there was no need for it. So when was it decided that we were gonna spend money again?
On this particular event?
Yes.
That was built into the budget um, last year and there's a residual.
No, I understand, what we did was we, we changed the name of the special account so that, so the board could spend the money if we voted to do it.
Right.
And the conversation was that it was not going to be necessary because of all the sponsors and the money that was. And, and I don't have a problem with it, it's just that, again, my understanding was that um, you know, if, if town money's going to be used, this board needs to
Absolutely.
To spend it, right?
Absolutely, yeah, and we're not, we're not even there yet. Um, we've just started the donation solicitation process and we've just started to receive checks. So if there is a need to dip into funds in excess of what's been raised, um, you guys will be the very first to know and you know, be able to provide your authorization or not. Um, but we'll be able to provide you those financial snapshots when we get there.
So what we'll do is we'll have a motion for the, for the one day liquor license and then we'll put it on the, on the agenda for two weeks to have the committee come in and the parks department come in, so we can all get coordinated on it and discuss it.
Sure.
I mean, I mean, I think we, we, we created that account for this reason, so I have no issue with the expenditure. We just want to dot I's and cross T's to make sure that it's not a last minute thing when we say, oh, we need funding. I'd rather get an assessment maybe of what we think they'll need, park it through a motion, so it's available for their, this committee's use.
Well, that's what we're gonna, then that's what we'll do in two weeks, because we don't have anybody here to answer that question. Right?
And if it's not two weeks, maybe twelve weeks if it, whenever they're ready to go, right?
It'll, it'll be our next meeting.
Yeah.
I'm sure it'll be ready for that.
Put us at the event September night.
Yeah.
Good point.
Right, that's why it'll be.
I, I, I will restate my statement and say, why don't we know now? Sorry.
All right, so I'm looking for, uh, I'm looking for a motion to approve the liquor license.
I moved that the select board vote to approve a one day liquor license for the Mendon Brothers of the Brush for the Rock the Block to be held on Saturday, September ninth, from two P M. to eleven P M. at Memorial Park, Little League Field, Millville Road, Mendon, Massachusetts. A condition of this license is for the Brothers of the Brush Association to send a certificate of insurance to the town to cover all liability insurance associated with the operation and sale of alcohol.
Second.
Right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Right, number five has to do with um, setting the date for the uh, for the special town meeting and open the warrant. Um, we had, we had discussed it um, under old business, uh, our last meeting and we had ten, we had set a date of November twenty eighth. Um, we're gonna revisit this, um, but uh, it's been suggested that the financial team actually meet um, because there's a couple of, couple of issues to do with tax bills and possible appropriations at the special town meeting that may come into play, so I'm gonna ask them to uh, to meet in the next, before our next meeting and then we'll revisit the date. So we're gonna, just gonna pass over that for now. Yeah, unless we, unless we do have one next week, if we do decide to do that, right? Otherwise, the next meeting will be September sixth. So, number six, um, looking for a motion to, do, do we have Joanne Lamath here?
Against Senator.
She's here, come on up. You can just stay there, it's fine. Welcome. Thank you very much for volunteering. I understand you were involved uh, on a similar committee in Exbridge.
Correct. We moved to Bound two minutes, two years ago, but I was on the bottom of the Exbridge Cultural Council. In fact, I was the chair for two years there. So I moved to town, I just finished my term with them in June and said, I'm gonna go to Mendon since I live in Mendon.
Right. Well, thank you very much for stepping up and, and letting us know that you're interested. So do I have a motion?
I move that the select board vote to appoint Joanne, uh, sorry, Lamath, Lamath to a term on the Mendon Cultural Council to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
Sir's second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome.
She will be getting a letter sworn in?
Yes, you do need to go see the town clerk and, and just to get sworn in. Nope. You can go as soon as it's, it's convenient when she's open.
She'll be happy to see you.
Right. Number seven, we're looking uh, for an appointment to the highway department? Why didn't you do some to us, John?
All right, so this is Jonathan Sheehan, let's get it right. Uh, Jonathan's coming to us with fifteen years of experience working in the highway department for the town of Millville. We had four interviews and he was our top candidate, so we would like to appoint him to the highway department. And then we have Gary Richard. Uh, Gary comes to us with experience. He has worked at a um, recycling facility before that deals with a lot of the stuff that we deal with at the recycle center down here on Saturday mornings, so I'm looking to appoint him to the part time recycle center attendant.
Okay, and, and what, before, just before we get into the, to, to make that motion, I just want to verify that there was a kind of a, a reprieve or an extension where people can take their, is there another date for people to take their trash cans to the recycling center to get rid of them, the ones that are being replaced? Is that what I saw on Facebook?
I believe that uh, in talking to the board of health, they are gonna put two more Saturdays open down there to get rid of more of the trash cans.
Is that true?
Board of Health?
It's, it's me.
Okay, I'll say specifically, I, I'll say specifically, I talked to Jack McClellan and he wants to do two more days down there. Like, that way I'm not putting them on, on the spot.
Okay. So is it, so is it fair to say that that is gonna happen, it's accurate, or, or you just, is there any reason why it wouldn't?
Hello?
Oh, we have somebody with their hand raised?
Hi, there are two more dates set in, in August.
Okay, and that's, and Karen, that's what you, was posted on Facebook, right?
No, that's posted on your website, the town's website.
So it's already, so it's on the board of health, which is what?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so it, so the dates are, do you know what the dates are?
Not this Saturday, he's taking this Saturday off and I think he said it'll be the following Tuesday.
That's my point.
It's Saturday, August twenty sixth and Saturday, September second, and I will paste the link in the chat.
All right, that's what I was trying to get at. So we can get the right dates. Uh, everybody's on the same page about it, right? All right, so I'm looking for a motion, number seven.
I moved that the select board vote to appoint Jonathan Sheehan as a heavy equipment operator with a requirement to possess or obtain necessary licenses within a reasonable amount of time after appointment and it's subject to a one year probation period. I also want to add that's subject to successful completion of the background check. Further, I moved that the select board vote to appoint Gary Richard as a part time recycling center attendant at the Mendon Recycling Center.
Second.
We have, we have rates?
Uh, twenty-two forty for heavy equipment operator, eighteen for recycling.
Twenty-two forty for the heavy equipment operator and eighteen for the part time recycling person. Okay, so we'll get that added into the motion and it's been made in second, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, let's, um, we're gonna pass over number eight at the moment about the discussion of the contract, cause I think we have, we have um, James Barnak and Kimberly Sloan. Are they on the call?
Yep.
Yes, we are.
Yes, hi.
So, so why don't we uh, rather than keep them waiting, why don't we do that? So, thank you, thank you very much for coming to speak with us and bring us up to date. This has to do with the uh, the, the plans for the reconstruction of Route sixteen as it runs through the town, is that correct?
Correct, yes, uh, so we start just west of Taft Avenue and we continue east for about one point nine miles um, along Route sixteen to the Hope Dale Town Line.
Okay, so it's, so it's somewhere around Lake Nipmuck, is that right? Just west of Taft Avenue would be.
Yep, near, near, yeah, and it passes by the um, Drive-In Theater, that area.
Okay. All right, what can you tell us about it?
Uh, James, did you want to go through your PowerPoint quickly?
Sure, sure, let me, um, let me.
I just want to introduce James Barnark, he's our uh, designer for Mastiot. He's with H N T B and we also have Colin White here from H N T B as well. And James has put together a PowerPoint, if that's acceptable to you, we could run through that pretty quickly.
Sure.
Okay, great.
Did everyone see the uh, PowerPoint?
Yep, looks good.
Yes.
Great, um, so just uh, like Kim said, we just uh, prepared a, a overview. Um, this is a condensed version of the um, public hearing that we had in September of twenty twenty-two. So why was this project initiated, uh, the need for the project, uh, substandard geometric constraints? Uh, so, uh, substandard multimodal operational and safety deficiencies. Uh, there's current traffic congestion uh, on Route sixteen and then evaluating uh, the accessibility for bike and pad accommodations. And the purpose of the project is to improve the geometrics of the intersections, uh, to promote safety for all users and to provide great separated bike and pad accommodations along Route sixteen. Uh, so as Kim was mentioning, um, in red is the project area. Uh, it's, it's just west of Taft Ave. And then it, it, it ends at the Mendon-Hopedale line uh, on the right in blue. Uh, we are uh, redesigning uh, four intersections and we'll go through those on the next few slides. So some of the project goals, like I mentioned, improving uh, pad accommodations, improving bike accommodations and safety, improving intersection safety and geometry, uh, promoting multimodal activity, uh, improving the condition of the roadway on Route sixteen, uh, improving access management into commercial and residential driveways and then improving stormwater management. So the preferred alternative that uh, we are proposing is um, two eleven foot travel lanes, uh, one in each direction with a two way left turn lane, um, shoulders on either side, a seven foot sidewalk on the north side and then a shared use path with a buffer on the south side. Um, this is a general uh, section, in some areas it does uh, change, but for the, for the most part, uh, sidewalks on the north side and a shared use path on the south side. Um, some of the traffic changes that Colin can speak to when we uh, look at the intersections is uh, to accommodate W B sixty-seven turning movements, improve sightlines at intersections, new pavement markings. Um, the project will comply with ADA crossings, uh, new traffic signals at Route sixteen in Hartford Ave West and Route sixteen at Maple Street, um, signal improvements at Route sixteen in North and Main and then a new mid-block crossing with flashing beacons at the Hope Dale Town Line. So this is the existing intersection at Hartford Ave West and this is the proposed um, redesign. So it's a signalized intersection, as you can see on the left side of the screen, if you're heading eastbound, we, we created a left turn pocket lane. And then if you're heading westbound, uh, we created a right turn lane um, with a divided painted median uh, for, to improve safety. You can also see in the orange is uh, sidewalk and in yellow is the shared use path. Um, at Route sixteen in Millville, uh, this is a unsignalized intersection. Uh, we are maintaining the unsignalized intersection, but we are improving the geometry of Millville, so it tees into Route sixteen. You can also see that we're widening Route sixteen uh, to provide a um, turn lane um, uh, west of the intersection and then a left only for Route sixteen. So this allows vehicles heading eastbound to bypass the left turning vehicles. Again, you can see the sidewalk in orange on the north and in yellow is the shared use path on the south side.
Can I just interrupt you for a second and, and ask a question? When we had this hearing last year and you went through this with us, it was, it was brought up to you that um, you know, there was a potential uh, new development going in at the driving range with a, a grocery store. Since then, uh, our zoning laws have been amended to add an overlay district and those plans are most likely moving ahead. Has that been taken into account? Uh, because that could, I think significantly impact the traffic flow at that intersection at Millville Street.
And do you want me to answer that or do you want to? Um, I, I think she's on mute, but I think she said for me to answer that, um, so we are.
Sorry about that, yeah, yeah, go ahead, James, I'm sorry.
So we are coordinating with the developer, the developer has another consultant on board. Um, so that developer and consultant is working with Mastop. Um, right now they are in the, the permitting phase of that project. Um, we are, like I said, we are coordinating it and um, the goal is if, if they, if they get through the permitting process um, before advertisement, you know, certainly that would be included in, you know, the, the project together, but um, you know, we don't know how quickly they are gonna be moving. So all I can say is that we are aware of it, we are coordinating, um, it is all going through Mastop. Um, so we will do our best, uh, but we can't um, we can't wait for the developer um, to move this project, so it's really, it's really on them to get through all the hurdles that they need to get through. Does that answer your question, sir?
It, it does, I just want to make sure you're aware of it, I know our planning board is certainly aware of it, somebody has their hand up too.
I, I, oh, sorry.
Yeah, uh, Jack Hunter, I'm the town planner, uh, just a few, just so we're all on the same page. The developer had withdrawn their original proposal, which included at first a roundabout and then a signal. They are preparing their plans as we speak for another submission and they're proposing a signal. Um, I'd say under, I would expect them in by September and probably get approval, maybe, maybe November. I don't know if that meets your, your advertising, but I think more importantly, um, something's gonna happen on this land and it's gonna happen within a twelve months easily. And ninety-five percent sure, whatever happens there is gonna require a signal. So I just don't want us digging up everything and realigning things if we have, if we don't have to.
Uh, certainly agree with that, um, we did receive their um, latest plans, uh, although conceptual, we received those about two weeks ago, so we are aware of um, the, the changes um, in the redesign and um, we have worked, luckily H N T B has worked with their design consultant uh, on other projects, so um, again, if they can get through all the environmental steps, uh, this project will be coordinated with ours.
So let me ask.
I, I'm just wondering how the timing, how, how, if, if there's gonna be some timing between the lights with those now three traffic lights and what I would think is a fairly small um, distance.
It, it's something that we will have to evaluate in coordination with Mastop.
Jack, have anything else?
Well, I, let me ask you, when do you expect to advertise?
So right now we have, um, it's an estimated advertising date of May twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five, yes, so that's what we're targeting.
So if the previous gentleman stated that as long as this plan, our, our plan for the uh, development goes through, before you advertise, you can incorporate it.
Well, we.
Is that what I heard?
Yes, yes and no, I mean, we, we need to give H N T B some lead time certainly to um, incorporate those changes into our design. So, you know, we wouldn't want to receive something, um, say, you know, a couple of months before the ad date, that would probably be a little bit too. That would probably be a little bit too late because at that point, we're done with the design. We're getting ready to advertise. We, we will probably have been started to meet with the property owners and negotiate those kinds of things. So, so, long story short, if, if this developer can get us something. Um, you know, I would say it's gonna have to be by early next year. Uh.
I can almost assure you, you will have approved plans by this calendar year.
Okay.
Um, the last thing is to end, uh, to your traffic or designers. I want to also make sure that the town's traffic engineer is involved in any of this final design for the signal.
Uh, sure, yeah, we can do that. And uh, we're actually heading towards what we call a hundred percent design. Um, I think, what, in February, James, approximately? So, uh, of course, we'll get you a set of those plans. When those are ready and then anything that the developer has that we can incorporate that's ready, we'll, we'll, we'll get that over to you. And your traffic people.
Terrific.
So I just want to make sure. Want to make sure you understand that our, our uh, planning board. Will have some input into what's done on Route sixteen, so that everybody's on the same page. So it gets all incorporated together, as long as it's in a timely fashion. Is that right?
Correct. Yes, absolutely.
And by timely, you, you're talking about sometime this winter is when you would need those designs. From the, from the developer on sixteen, so it gets incorporated into, and that traffic signal gets incorporated into everything else?
It would be, it would be nice to have it incorporated into our hundred percent design. Um, which I said, we, we're estimating now February of twenty-four. So if we got the developers' plans uh, later this year, James, does that give you enough time? That's, that's a little bit tight, but.
Yeah, yeah, I, I would agree. I, I think um, this winter, early two thousand and twenty-four would be um. You know, kind of that, that, that limit so that we can um, revise the plans as necessary uh, to incorporate this.
I, I think we can easily make that deadline.
Okay, all right. That'd be helpful. Thank you.
All right, I'm sorry for the interruption.
No, that's okay. And, and to the other point of uh, sharing the plans, we did share the seventy-five percent plans with the select board. Um, I believe that was in March of this year. Um, so the town has.
I think it was, I think it was last fall, actually.
Um.
But anyways, yeah, either way, it's been shared with us, right?
Yes, yes. Um. So this is uh, Route sixteen at Washington, Emerson and Maple Street. Um, this is the proposed redesign. So Washington and Emerson uh, remains unsignalized. We're proposing a signal at Route sixteen and Maple. Um, you know, Colin can go into more of the details, but um, really there's added uh, turn lanes left and right. Uh, to create a safer uh, movement of traffic uh, through this unique intersection. Um, again, on the, the north side in orange is the sidewalk and in yellow is the shared-use path.
Can I ask, uh, what your thoughts are about the traffic that crosses directly from Emerson to Washington? The traffic that goes to North Bridge essentially instead of going up North Ave? Cause, cause it, that intersection's looking a little even more difficult now for travelers across that. That path, which are quite a bit, not so much during traffic hours when you'll get killed, but. Other, other times of the day, there's a lot of people using that. To get over to the North Bridge side of town. I, I, it doesn't look like you're doing more study in that area. So this is a more of a final design. And you think that that stoplight's gonna offer the pause that people need to cross there?
Uh, well, we did take a, take a look at the, the traffic volumes. Um. You know, certainly. Not a significant amount, maybe, maybe more off-peak hours. Um, but you can see that. As you stated, that's, that would be a, a difficult area uh, to, to cross. Um, especially if you're coming from Emerson. Um, because of the right-turn lane on the Maple Street, uh, it's set back a bit. Uh, so I thought that that would uh, not be. Uh, uh, safe enough movement uh, to allow. So that right now is a right turn out of Emerson.
So it's gonna be right turn only there? Are you gonna put a traffic sign there? Like you're blocking transport across that intersection?
Correct. There, there will be a raised physical median uh, to pre. I, I don't want to say prevent, but uh, significantly reduce uh, vehicles from continuing directly north to Washington.
But, but no like traffic rule in place to stop it?
Uh, if someone wants to do it, sir, uh, you know, we can't stop them, but we are going to try our best to prevent it.
Was, was there any, was there any discussion or, or, or thought to turning it into a traffic circle?
We, I think we did uh, a while back, uh, take a look at other uh, control options for uh, these intersections. Uh, I believe, as always, uh, you know, the available space for roundabouts. Um, is a big consideration. And also, uh, traffic volumes, you know, a, a roundabout has. Um, I should say, uh, different capacities to handle traffic. And out here, it's uh, just a whole lot of uh, commuting traffic. Uh, it seems that way. And when you don't have a lot of traffic coming from the side streets to, to interrupt that. Um, flow of the main line, I think that becomes uh, the, the roundabout doesn't really operate well. And the side streets just get stuck. Yeah, so, so when, when modeled, there's, there's too much traffic volume on Route sixteen. So uh, the way the roundabout works, uh, cars coming from Emerson and Washington wouldn't find enough gaps. Um, so when we did our, our alternative analysis study. Um, you know, the, the safety came up that it, a roundabout wasn't the preferred choice here, uh, for those reasons.
And, and you thought that this, this was the best option you could come up with?
It was, it was also, you know, the, kind of the funky geometry of these few roads here. Um, and getting them all to be able to come in um, together is just very difficult geometrically. Uh, we looked at a traffic signal at the Emerson-Washington. Um, but again, uh, there are certain requirements for putting in a, a traffic signal. Uh, certain um, volume thresholds for the minor road, uh, which Emerson and Washington did not meet. So um, Maple Street had enough uh, vehicles coming out of it to, to meet the traffic signal warrant. Um, which is uh. Uh, paramount by uh, Mastot for installing a signal.
I just, I just have a couple of questions here in the audience. Um.
Sure. I don't think I can hear the audience, but.
Well, she'll, she'll come right up here to the, not that she has a problem being made, heard, but she can come up to the microphone right here if she'd like and.
You might not be able to.
Yeah, he make it, it's, it's not, it's right. This, this goes right into the system, so.
I had seen a plan that um. Back in. Probably last year that said Maple Street was going to be, be one-way. Which, to me, having lived on the corner of Washington Street and Route sixteen. And having seen and being the first responder for all the accidents that are out there. Uh, I thought that that was really uh, the smartest idea that you could have. And then you could keep your, um, my understanding is that the Carlson House is going to be uh. Taken away in that corner. And so you've got traffic going down. And not coming up. And the, the Route sixteen area would have all the traffic coming up from the light.
Uh, I believe that was looked at early on as an option. Um.
I saw, I saw our plan, that, that, I saw the plan that, that showed that. And that seemed to me to make an immense uh, amount of sense, having lived there for fifty years.
Yeah, yeah. So I believe the plan was, or the concept, I don't think we actually came up with an actual plan, but. Um, we were looking into at least uh, making Maple Street one-way away from the intersection. Uh, however, that put a, a lot of traffic uh, at the left-turn lane up at the main and North Street intersection. Um, which would have required a double left turn, actually. Um, uh, onto Route sixteen and, and we had a lot of, um. I mean, double-left turn lanes have their own issues, but uh, we also had some uh, space constraints there. Uh, especially with the uh, park and um, some of the permitting process that goes along with that. So that was uh, just a concept that was considered, um, but not moved forward with.
Well, in, in my opinion, having been there again for all those years, it, if you just. See that most people do go up to the light because it's safer. So you, you do, you do have that anyway, regardless of whether you have a, a double left or any of those things. You're having that. That's there all the time. People go up there. The people that don't know. That what the traffic light is, what the, what the traffic is, come up to. Uh, come up Maple Street and then there's, there's a very long line and you have all these. People trying to get through the driveway that is in front of the Carlson House and they skip around and um. It, it totally, having been there and having seen it and having known what the, the main street and. And Route sixteen thing works so much better. It, it doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, I, I, uh, I, I think the, the thing to say is, I mean, you know the area more than we do. Um, and we appreciate your, your input. Um, and we'll, we'll bring this back up with the uh, Mastot Traffic Engineer. Um, but what Colin described is, is just uh. You know, transparency of our alternative analysis process and, you know, what, what went into the decisions that were made. Um, so, um, well.
Can I ask, did you, did you speak with our planner or our police chief? Um, or any local officials about this plan for their input? Because I have to tell you, the way you're describing this, and I was a police officer here for years. And I'm an accident reconstructionist and I can tell you, this is, in some ways, is making a bad situation worse.
I agree.
So, so my, so our direct involvement has been with the select board.
Well, I'm the chair of the select board and I haven't been consulted about this since you talked about doing the turn lane and making uh, Maple Street one-way. So I'm not sure when you, who you consulted with on the select board, but you certainly didn't consult with all of us. Which is why I asked you to come here tonight, because we were pretty much in the dark.
And so all of our correspondence has been with Lonnie, uh, Tineo.
Lonnie Tineo is not on the select board and he hasn't been for three or four months?
Uh, correct. So this is dating back, you know, back to two thousand and twenty-one.
I think it's a good idea for you to go back to the drawing board.
I do too.
For the board, I, I have had no discussion either.
Yeah, have you spoken to our, have you spoke to our planning board at all about it?
Well, we would have had, James, we would have had a road safety audit done in, at the road safety audit. We would have had police and so forth, um, at that road safety audit. Do you recall that at all? That was, I don't, I wasn't assigned the project back then, but.
Yeah, this, this project, I mean, it was even before my time. It was uh, initiated in two thousand and seventeen.
Right. I think the road safety audit was in two thousand and eighteen, which the purpose of the road safety audit is to identify. Safety issues such as this and we would have invited um, police, fire, uh, everybody from the town.
Yeah.
So, so yes.
Actually, ju, as you were saying this, so, so that you know where I, where I saw this plan with Maple Street being one-way. It was from the, the, the chief of police. Uh, he had a plan that showed the one-way Maple Street.
Okay.
So. Uh, I don't know how this other thing developed, but it, it doesn't make any sense at all.
A, and for the board, I know that the chairman of the planning board had been involved in this. I don't know when and how long ago.
Well, again, a, as I said, my, my memory was a, about a year ago or eleven months ago. There was a presentation that was done. Um, and there was a, a group in the, uh, in the new police station community room where this was explained. And at that time, certainly the design included a one-way on Maple Street.
Correct.
Um, which, you know, is a. I think is a needed improvement and everybody was on board with that. And now you're telling me that it's gone away. I, I think it's problematic. And, and the idea that we have this project that's going forward a little bit further up the road. I, I really would, I'd implore you to take another hard look at this. And maybe if there's something that can be done, even if it is a double-left turn lane. At North Ave to allow people to come up Main Street and take the left and keep Maple Street a one-way. I think that really would improve traffic flow and volume. Um, and if there's a need for us to take some land or give some land, maybe that needs to be looked at. But I, you know, and I, I understand that, you, you know, there's, there's constraints on, on every side. But I really wish you would take another harder look at it, which is exactly why I asked you to come here. Because I was concerned that it was the things had changed and it wasn't having the proper look. And all the proper people being questioned about it.
No, so.
So I do appreciate you coming here, but I'm asking you to. Take another look.
Yeah, no, certainly we will. Um, and you know, all I can say is uh, two things. Um, projects like this go a lot better when uh, designers, Mastot and the town are working together and collaborating. Um, so that's what we want to do. Um, but I just want you to note that this project has been around since two thousand and seventeen. So some of the decisions made back then um, may have been before some of the people on the select board. Um, you know, so there.
I think the disconnect is the change from then till now or not.
And I, and I, and I get that, but a, as you said, a year, less than a year ago. It was a one-way with, with, and, and now it's changed. So that was a recent change that took place, which is why I asked you here. And I, we appreciate you coming in, because I know it's not easy to come in here and, and be put on the spot like this. We appreciate it. But it's, again, the current design is problematic and it's not acceptable.
Yeah, so this is the same slide deck from a year ago. So, um, the change.
James, this was um, what was presented at the design public hearing, correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay, so.
At that hearing, there was a discussion about Maple Street being a one-way. So I don't know what that, what, what that indicates on that, on that drawing, but at that meeting, and we have a recording of it. Um, the, the proposal was, and the police department, I know, is under the impression that it's a one-way. So again, I, I think you need to take another look at it.
And quite, quite frankly, up at, at North Avenue, there are two lanes. One goes straight and one goes left and, and that's how it, it works.
It's a community agreement.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it is only.
Just works that way.
It is only one lane, but he's ta, saying they're gonna turn into two, but they're suggesting that because of the traffic volume, it really should be.
Uh, yeah.
Right.
The other intersections are great. This one is a death trap and you only have to get in your car and go drive it like I did right before I came to this meeting. And I'm sure you did as well, uh, and almost get hit every time I go through. And so you just have to go with the engineer, just has to drive it.
Well, a, actually, as you, you call it a death trap, I have been out there three times since I have lived there. And tried to resuscitate three different people, because I'm a nurse and I could do it. And I, again, I feel like I'm the first responder out there for uh, tons of accidents. And three people have died there and, and I, you know, we couldn't get them back.
That's.
That, and that's, that's true. You can look that up.
Uh, I'm sorry, you mentioned, um, someone mentioned that there was a. I'm sorry, you mentioned, someone mentioned that there was a gentleman at the Design Public Hearing that talked about Maple being a one-way street. Is that correct? Do you know? Do you know who was there? Because I have a copy of the transcript here. I'm just trying to look through it.
That was a that was a discussion. That was during the discussion and subsequent to that as well.
So it was during the Design Public Hearing?
That's my recollection.
Do you know who the person was?
I do not.
Because then I could I because I have the transcript here. I'm just trying to see if I can find something on it.
I know I spoke at it. I also know that the Planning Board Chair, Bill Ambrosino, was there and and spoke to it. But again, I I think what's what's most important is that what we're explaining is that that the situation is actually making a bad situation worse. And it would be great for you to take another look at it and all all our local planners in with our, you know, public safety.
And residents.
And sure, and but put your heads together to try to stop it before it makes a bad situation worse.
Can I can anybody hear me? This is Chief Currie. I just wanted to talk for a minute. Can you hear me?
Sure, go ahead, chief.
So, yeah, so I was I I was involved in a lot of this in the beginning, and you're right, it does date back to two thousand seventeen, eighteen. Myself, Bill Kessler, Kim Newman, the board at the time, we were involved with the planners from the state. We actually went out and did site visits several times to every intersection. We had our hard hats on out there, and we spent time out there a couple of days at different points during the, you know, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen time period. We did discuss a one-way at one point, and we came up with a concept design. And I think what happened at one point is that the state went back and vetted it and actually looked at the the true statistical analysis of accidents of sixteen and Maple. They pulled our records. They had their records, everything that was reportable to come up and figure out if it was a an option that they should pursue. My my stance on the point at the time was, you know, I'll go with whatever the statistics say and on top of it, if that's an avenue we want to pursue, then I would want all stakeholders involved in it. So I would have wanted to come to the table with everybody in the town that has saying at the the Planning Board, the Select Board, but also all of the residents who live on Maple Street. I wouldn't want to see us do something like we did on Cemetery Street where one day it just turned to a one-way. And then people were going down the wrong way, and we were dealing with head-on collisions and accidents and just it was a mess when that street was changed over, you know, back in the late nineties. So my stance has always been that if that's something that anybody wants to pursue and the state wanted to pursue and the Select Board wanted to pursue at the time that we should have had, you know, much like on Washington Street, we just did with the recent bylaw, have every stakeholder involved with it. And I think it just didn't go anywhere from there with the previous boards. It just kind of died out, and I think that's where we ended up with the plans that that were reviewed last year at the at the hearing. And I and at that point, I I I would have imagined that we were just at beyond that point where we didn't want to get the stakeholders involved. So that's my historical reference of it. I mean, because I have been involved with the whole process. And and one way or another, I would just I'd go what the stats say and what the residents would want. I don't want to shove anything down anybody's throat. You know, I I want to make sure everybody's happy with it.
But I think you'd agree, safety's got to be a a big part of the decision, right?
Safety is a big part of every decision, but but no matter what you do over there, it's 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 always going to be a mess on Route sixteen over there unless you can literally remove the street. I I don't know what the easy answer is over there, because I I mean, people, you're turning down a one-way, you are going to force a lot of traffic to sixteen. And my big concern would be are we enlarging the intersection enough for the trucks that go through there and can't make the turns? Are we going to have tractor trailers running over cars now? So I mean, I I'm all for looking at that street, but I want to make sure we look all the way down the lane and make sure that this one impact that we do is it can be accommodated in other areas. So I'm I'm all for, you know, if if you want to make it a one-way and we get all the stakeholders that want to do it, but we got to make sure the traffic is supported in other areas. Because then we're just going to move that problem down the street to another problem that we're going to have to deal with.
And again, all I'm asking for is is that it have another look with everybody involved and and make the best decision. You know, you you can't.
Yeah, and I'd love to sit down and do it with you guys again.
Yes, absolutely. We can. We'll certainly do that.
Right, did we beat that? All right, yeah. Are there any other comments anybody wants to make? Are you actually widening the road? Because I know at one point there was talk about narrowing some of it to try to slow the traffic down, wasn't it?
Yeah, a majority of the project, we are narrowing the curb lines, but in in some areas we are widening, but I would say a majority of the corridor is narrowing of the curb, existing curb lines.
I don't think they're counting the sidewalks. There was a there was an initial slide that had the cross-section with the with the with the lengths cut out of it, and it was somewhere around eight-ish. There's like a, well, four. It looked like four-ish, like one side was sidewalk, the other side was path. And they were taking that, right? And that would be this orange and this yellow on the map here, and then the green would be the grass that they would be have to plant back after they cut into the properties.
Actually, that's 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 my house right there.
Right.
That my which is going to make, I mean, I have trees there that are considered historic trees, the it's but what's going to happen is the cars are going to be practically in my living room if if you do what you're saying you're going to do there. And that's that's houses that been there since eighteen twenty-four. We've already we've already given you the sidewalk that's there, because on my deed, there is a well that was all part of my property, and I have pictures that will show you this. And and now the sidewalk is there. So that was another feat. And I I know that I was going to meet with Jack, I think, is it Jack that and Lonnie, we're going to meet and discuss that at some point.
Right, we we were going to have a meeting actually today, then it was canceled. And I was going to bring out the plans with you and and just walk through the design at the at the corner.
Right, yeah. And but we are going to still do that at some point, correct?
Yes, we are. Yes.
Okay.
Yep, yeah. So I can, I was going to bring out the plans and just kind of show you you know, where the state right-of-way line is, where your property is, and where the sidewalk is going.
Okay, if you just finish the rest of your PowerPoint and then just we just need to, like I said, I I just want to make sure that there's that this isn't a completed process. I understand it's it's down the road, but there's still some room to discuss it with all the stakeholders.
Yeah, no, certainly. Again, you know, collaboration creates the best design. I just think there was, you know, a lot of different parties, and this project has gone on for a long time. So happy to bring everyone up to speed and get to the best solution.
Great.
So this is the intersection of North and North Main and sixteen. So this is the redesign. Really, essentially, each leg we're providing left turn lanes. And then you can see the the sidewalk and shared-use path. Colin was mentioning, this is Founder's Park right here. This is Article ninety-seven property, so any impact to that property has to go to the state legislation for voting. So we're trying to avoid impacts of that property. So what Colin was mentioning, you know, when you make Maple one-way, the data shows that you need two left turn lanes and a through lane here. So either you're taking the property on the right or you're taking the property on the left to accommodate the volumes. So again, it's it's not that we don't want to do what the town wants at Maple. It's just I think the other gentleman said, you know, what are the dominos of doing that? And that was part of the alternative analysis back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
You tell me what the blue shading means down on the lower right exit DB mark?
Yeah, this is this is still in design development. We're we're trying to show that, you know, we're working on the driveway there, potentially right in, right out. But certainly, that is in design development right now.
The red is curbing. Is that what the red is?
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't be it wouldn't be curving if it was the the driveway. I I believe now we're changing it to it's just a typical thirty-foot commercial driveway opening. It's not right in, right out.
And then what about up on North Ave, the opening to the currently multiple different named properties, but also Fino? Are you curbing that off? What's the blue in the? Yeah, the blue.
Yeah, it's just it's just line work. We we will be providing a driveway entrance and then and then like passed up here will just be country drainage. It would just be edge of pavement, no curbing.
Okay.
Mike Goddard, you have a question? Could you talk a little bit about the that corner, the the double left turn lane and on the left-hand side of Main Street? You said that's are you avoiding that because you do not want to deal with getting a legisla- the legislator involved to change the property, sort of ninety-seven, wherever you.
It's Article ninety-seven property, and yes, we are trying to avoid it because it has to go to the state legislator, and that could be years before it's passed.
Yeah, it's just a long, arduous process.
But but if I would, I I understand that, but if if you think if actually that's the best solution and it's a long, arduous process, should we not? Should we just dismiss it or pursue it? And I'm not sure what Article ninety-seven land is, honestly.
I think it I think it has to do with historical, and it and it was established by by the by the.
District Shawnus?
Yeah, it's.
It's usually like historical or parkland type areas that typically we want to avoid or not impact at all.
Because it was the Founder's Park.
Yeah, that's where the saw pit.
Unless it's best solution.
Right.
And I'm saying it's the best solution, but I just I I always hesitate when I hear people, you know, something's hard to avoid it because it's hard versus it's the best solution. Let's do the work, right?
Well, I mean, I I think, you know, what we're proposing on Maple Street is what we think is the best solution from a engineering perspective. We're not avoiding, it's just if you want to make it Maple one-way, then you have to do something at Main Street. So I wouldn't say we're avoiding it.
Okay.
So the next steps, we're targeting spring twenty twenty-four to submit the hundred percent design. Fall of twenty twenty-four to submit the PSNE design. Estimated advertisement date, as Kim mentioned, is spring of twenty twenty-five. Estimated start of construction would be fall of twenty twenty-five, and then end of construction would be summer of twenty twenty-eight. And to the select boards, you know, as you can see in steps one and two, you know, from now till fall of twenty twenty-four, you know, that gives us about another year of collaboration. So you know, your input can change what's in what gets what gets advertised. So and then just questions and discussions, but I think we've had a a great.
A lot of them. No, I just, again, I just would reiterate, it it would be great if you could get local collaboration between the 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 involved boards or committees, and specifically, as the police chief said, you know, the the local residents, the people who live along there on those streets. Because I think they should have a lot of a lot of the say, because they're the ones that have to get in and out of their homes and those those roadways. I just I'm just asking that it it take another look. That's all.
Yeah, we'll certainly do that. Absolutely. So just we'll just need a little bit of time. We'll meet with our district office, traffic section, and discuss with this with them and see what we can come up with. And maybe we can meet back with you in a couple of months at another meeting.
That that would be tremendous.
Perfect.
Thank you so much for your time. We appreciate it.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
That was fun.
Yeah, I think it was important. Now, it was Collin Center. Is somebody, are they still there or have they?
I'm here.
Well, thank you very much for waiting patiently or not, but we appreciate you waiting.
I had a slice of pizza. I ordered my kids' pizza delivery because I was going to be on the call, so I enjoyed some of it. So no worries.
Okay, so so we want to talk about the proposal of 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 the Collins Center doing a professional search for us for a permanent new town administrator. So can you walk us through that?
Sure, absolutely. I won't read it to you. I think you've all had a chance to look at it. I'll just talk in general. Let me introduce myself really briefly. My name's Mary Icardi. I've actually done a few projects with you all in the past, so it's nice to be seeing some of you and meeting new people. Done some of your personnel policies and some job description work. Been with the Collins Center. It's coming up on fourteen years. We've done hundred, over a hundred of these searches, but we've not done one for your town. So our whole approach is getting to really the decision-makers, which are the members of the board. So our first step is to, as you can see, the most important thing we do is create the profile of what it is you're looking for. So we start out by individually meeting with each member of the board so that we can have a longer conversation and not worried about you know, different opinions at the same time. And what we do is we meet with you. We will meet with any key stakeholders you want us to meet with. Oftentimes, that could be a public safety official, economic planning, development. We want to know what it is that the town is looking for in the next town administrator. So we always ask the same three questions. What are the challenges facing the town? What are the challenges facing the next town administrator? And what are the characteristics of an ideal candidate? And we use that to inform our profile. I sent you a sample profile if you had a chance to look at it. And and it's a fairly standard format, and and the information changes based on our interviews. Oftentimes, we have people say they want a public forum. We're happy to do a public forum, but really, the elected officials have the responsibility to appoint a town administrator, and and you all can receive that input. So once we get the engagement underway, we'll I can come back to a group meeting or we can figure it during the individual meetings. And what we then do is create a draft profile for you all to approve at your regular meeting so that, you know, we can get input from other places, but it really is up to you to vote on and approve what you're looking for in your next town administrator. So that that sample we gave you is a good indication of the work and the data we'll be looking to collect. And then what we do is what we do best is do direct recruiting. We will advertise, certainly. These days, the best advertisements are the listservs of the organizations around the Commonwealth that would have candidates, things like the Massachusetts Planning Association, School Business Officers Association, Finance Treasurers Collectors, Small Town Administrators, the MMA we'll talk about. We tend to recommend advertising in the ICMA, which is the national organization, but we often get people who may be from Massachusetts who want to come here or want to relocate here. So we don't discourage reaching outside, but you'll have to decide is your ideal candidate, do they need massive? is your ideal candidate, do they need Massachusetts experience? And that's your call. We've seen it work either way. We would recommend that you aren't rigid on a requirement such as a master's degree or masters, uh, Massachusetts experience. We can use words like preferred. That will help you, you know, you want to cast uh, as large a net as possible. The market out there is very tough. We will talk to you about salary. We will do um, I haven't done one in recent months, so we'll do a, a market salary survey of what is the market these days uh, for these positions. We'll have to talk about what is scheduling and hybrid situations. You know, we want to get from you what these job requirements are and what the job description is. That all goes into the profile. So the profile is the most important recruitment tool. We will then distribute that. We do a lot of direct recruiting and, and we say it in our materials. Often the best person for a job isn't thinking they're looking for a job, you know, so one benefit of the Collins Center is that we, I personally, of the three hundred and fifty-one towns have worked in about a hundred and eighty of them. So we have a really broad network with municipal officials. We, we know the industry, we know the people. So our kind of networking and direct recruitment works really well. We anticipate, I have not spoken with you yet, but we anticipate you would be using a screening committee of some sort. We do recommend that as best for confidentiality and confidence of candidates who are going to put themselves out there. They don't want their names to be out in public unless they're going to be a finalist. So we do recommend some sort of screening committee. And we can work with you on what that looks like. We, we recommend um, a screening committee of five, but not more than seven, only because scheduling is going to be your biggest challenge. It's not going to be our deadline to, you know, the deadline to apply. It will be getting those five people together to do the meetings, to put the time in. Um, so what we do is we work with the screening committee for them to come up with questions. We use the profile that you create to inform the questions. We make sure, I never take my HR director hat off. The questions are legal, they're not leading, they're not biased. Um, we recommend people not to Google people. We'll get to backgrounds down the line. But we really don't, we want to have an objective, fair process at the screening level. We recommend that you give us the charge, the screening committee. We're facilitators. We're not on the screening committee. We don't get a vote. We facilitate the work of the screening committee. Um, that you give a charge saying, you know, we want a minimum of three candidates and a maximum of five candidates to be finalists, you know, that sort of thing. A choice of two is not really much of a choice, so we don't recommend, you know, it's happened with us before that the cream rises to the top and there's two really good candidates and the others were, you know, not so much. We would come to you and say, we have two candidates. Our goal is always to have three, four, three or four. That's a good number to work from in terms of finalists. And you get the confidence of those finalists. If people are one of five or six, they don't want their name out there. So we really have to be strategic about how many we want to bring in. So we work with the screening committee to come up with the questions based on the profile. We then do preliminary interviews in executive session because they meet the, the eighth exemption or the reason to go into executive session because it could harm uh, the, the candidate's um, employment. And then what we do is we work with the screening committee. We do a consensus method. We do not use a weighted or ranking matrix. We find that can really skew the results. We want people to come to consensus. So what we do when we share the resumes, we ask the, we ask the screening committee, answer the question, do you want to meet this person? Not, can you see them in the seat? That's your job. It's the select board's job to put them in the seat. It's the screening committee's job to put them before you. So we ask them to ra- rate, we call it rating, but it's answer the question, yes, maybe, or no, do you want to meet the person? And then we use a consensus to come up with how many people we want to do for a preliminary interview. So that works really well because sometimes, you know, people will see something different in a resume or something will trigger them. We do the preliminary interviews. We use the same sort of method to determine who we want to move forward to you. At that point, they're not quite finalists until we do the background check. They become finalists if they pass the background. So what we will do on the finalists is a criminal check and education check, reference checks. And um, we, we will let you know that they have been vetted before they become public. And then we will help you facilitate the interview process. I think somebody asked me, what's the timeframe? The timeframe is, I would imagine, we would start in September. You know, say we get the contract signed and all of that. Uh, we would start in September. We would have the profile ready by the end of September. We would want to do individual interviews with you all. My colleague, um, Michael Hale, who's the uh, former assistant town administrator in um, Shrewsbury. And he led our Electric Light in, in Shrewsbury. He's fabulous. He helps me with the profiles. He would be helping me with the interviews. We would want to get that draft profile to you probably mid to late September, so we could then advertise. We don't advertise for as long as we used to because we're getting into people's, the profile into people's hands really quickly. We're not advertising in the Globe and waiting for them to see the big help on the Sunday Globe like we used to. So we say three to four weeks max. So I would anticipate the deadline being in late October. The candidate review by the screening committee would be the end of October, the beginning of November. We would do the preliminary interviews in November. This is assuming your screening committee is appointed and can meet. And then I would anticipate, maybe it spills to December, but I would anticipate your interviews would be in December. So that would be really good in terms of somebody giving notice and starting in January. So that's my rough estimate of a timeframe and that assumes a cohesive screening committee who can meet regularly. There's not that many meetings for screening committees. It's about getting them all at the same date. When you think about people to put, do you have a screening committee set yet?
No.
Okay, so when you think about people who want to meet, usually they want to meet at, you know, in the evening. That's fine. We have, we can accommodate that. Um, there's not that many meetings, but they're all very important. There's a kickoff meeting, which we can do by Zoom. People are busy, so that first meeting where we want to meet. We do a, a meeting to formulate questions that can be done on Zoom. Sometimes people like to that, meet in person. But the meeting to review the resumes and the interviews really should be in person. So it's about a total of six meetings. So it's not that much of a commitment, but it is such an important role. So having people who can, you know, make meetings, we, once we get engaged with it and we get the profile going, we can really set out the um, the timeline for people. And we, and we do all of that coordination with the meeting, the scheduling of the meetings. We ask the committee, unless you designate somebody a chair, we ask the committee to come up with a chair and a clerk. While we're there to facilitate, we're not there to take your meeting minutes. So there does need to be somebody, you know, and the meeting minutes are no heavy lifting. Uh, it's just documenting what the process was. So that is a very quick overview. I know you've been in your last meeting, your last section a while. I'm happy to answer any specific questions.
Mike Goddard, did you have a question?
Mary, you mentioned to the screening committee, I'm curious, you're taking a facilitation role, but with the, the representative, representatives from your team have a vote or uh, influence? If, if there's a candidate that the screening committee that's appointed, maybe looking over, do you find to be a very strong candidate? Would you? Um, have a vote?
We don't vote, but we nudge. And, and, and more so, we um, because we know a lot of the candidates and we're not going to keep our mouths shut, you know. Um, uh, there may have been an occasion in my career where screening committees have read the paper on somebody and I'm like, well, let me tell you some background that I know about, you know, so we're also there to raise the red flags as well. So we, we really try not to let them go down a road. Um, you know, and, and we do say that, we will, depending on what you put in is the absolute requirement. We will tell the screening committee if we do not feel a candidate meets the requirements. We will give you a sample charge that you can give to the committee. Uh, usually that's around guaranteed confidentiality. You're not going to talk about it even with your spouses or you think people know. That sort of thing. We ask them not to Google names while they're reviewing resumes. It's really, it can create a biased situation. So we want to have that, those discussions after the initial review. We also recommend strongly that they are informed that we don't do courtesy interviews. Um, now, if somebody's qualified and we know them, that's great. They should be interviewed. That's not a courtesy interview. Sometimes we have screening committees see people, sometimes they're a resident, sometimes they're a politician. And they say, well, we owe that person an interview. That just goes down a road that we don't necessarily recommend. That doesn't mean if the committee decides to vote to interview that person, we're not going to say no, that's not our role. But um, there's different debates out there. People, um, people don't want to be patronized and they don't want to be asked in for an interview if they really don't have a shot. So those are some of the things that we'll, we'll talk about. But that's a great question.
The vice chair, Elena, you have, Elena Bruegler, she have a question?
I, I do have a question about uh, the screening committee and I wondered if you had any recommendations about uh, who as in? Uh, yeah, composition, like what roles uh, to consider or what roles to avoid having on the committee, um, like,
Yes.
About like, right, so like if there are.
Strongly, 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 strongly recommend no current employees be on a screening committee. You should not be interviewing your boss. Um, and there's such a temptation of who's in the room, who, how are the candidates? It puts a lot of pressure on somebody. You all can, we recommend, um,
How about elected, what about elected officials within the town?
Well, i- if you're meaning yourselves, um,
I'm not.
You know, if you're not meaning yourselves, sometimes we see, um, a FinCom representative, sometimes we'll see a school committee representative. It all depends on what are the areas of expertise that you want um, to view these candidates. What lens do you want in there? Um,
Let me just, I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but, but you did mention earlier that, you, you know, in the development of the profile, you would interview, you know, public safety and others. So, so there is a, there is a way for you to, for them to give input. But it's filtered through you, right?
Right, right. And if you like, what we, what, what we sometimes do is meet with a finance director. We, you know, meet with public safety. We want their input into what are the challenges facing the town. That's what the profile is about. Not who do they like best, because nothing is worse than when you have an employee on a committee who then says, my guy, my gal didn't make it forward. This is not a good pool. You know, that gets tricky. So we really don't recommend that. Oftentimes, we see representatives. Uh, you know, you want people who are your active community members, who will be, you know, viewing this through the lens of what is good for our town. But really, it's just their good judgment you want because they're supposed to be applying the profile you create. They're a screening committee, not a search committee. And that means they're carrying out your wishes. So they're applying what you come up with, using their own lens and perspective. Uh, the current screening committee I'm working with is the City of Chelsea City Manager. We're doing those interviews next week. So it's perfect timing. I'll be done with that one and I'll start this one. Uh, they have got somebody who used to be a city councillor. So sometimes we see former elected officials who, you know, don't have skin in the game right now, but have understanding of the municipality. Some, some municipalities want somebody from the business community. Or maybe there's a, uh, in Chelsea, there's a very large social service nonprofit industry because they have so many services and such a diverse population. They have a representative from that community on the committee. Uh, but each person other than one had some ties to the municipality. So you wouldn't want somebody who doesn't know what this role is, but it really doesn't need to be somebody who's going to say, I see her in that seat. Happened to me recently. There was somebody who was a former select board member and was a town official in another town. He dominated the screening committee because people defer to him for his judgment. So just get a blend of good people who are committed. Sometimes, um, you have open town meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so we, some towns will say, you know, who are your active, who's an active town meeting person? Sometimes a moderator, sometimes, you know, someone who's been on an ad hoc committee before. Um, it really is up to you, so you might want to start thinking about that. Um, we've seen uh, a FinCom rep, a planning rep, uh, even a public health rep. Sometimes, depending on the relationship with the schools, a school business manager or a school committee member has been on a screening committee. When I did the town of Framingham, they had a seventeen member screening committee because they wanted to include somebody for, from every interest. That took quite a while, but we did it. So that's when it was a town. So maybe, you know.
All right, does, does anybody, anybody have any other questions for Mary? Thank, thank you for your time and I just, just so. Okay, and I know I have one from the audience and I have one who's had to hand it for a while. I can't see who that is. Oh. Well, that's your thumbs up, okay. Sure. Tom Fitner from the Water Health and.
Tom Fitner, sixteen Emerson Street, right. Uh, hi, uh, question for you. Early on in your presentation, you made a, a statement. You said the market is tough. Could you kind of specify what you meant by that?
Well, we've had the big exit from municipal management. So uh, um, the pool, the candidate pools are small. Uh, depending, and I don't know your budget, um, but we're seeing now, City of Chelsea, we got thirty applicants. That was, you know, when you advertise two hundred plus, um, you're going to get more candidates. Um, it is, it depends on what you say you're looking for. There are people who are looking to become town. It's really about the demographics. It's, do you have, what are your experience requirements? If you're looking for somebody who's been a town administrator before, there aren't that many looking for work. It depends on the size of your municipality, what the challenges are, what, what the attraction of the job is. And that's our job to help you sell that. However, let me use, it's been in the newspaper, town of Northborough advertised had finalists fell through, they're out again. You know, they're going out again. So um, it's not, people aren't moving because the money, they've probably gotten more money where they are in order to stay. So it's hard to get somebody to move. That doesn't mean if we look at what your priorities are, maybe, you know, you will take somebody who's got fewer years of experience, but is on the way up. Or we really don't know and I wouldn't want to speculate because it's also geography. You've got some smaller towns around you. Will you attract somebody from there? What we're trying to do with succession planning across the Commonwealth, quite frankly, is to build in more assistance and assistance too. That has happened over the past few years. So there's a, there's a few more municipalities in the area that have those assistant town administrators or assistant to town administrators that might be ripe to, to pluck, to, to move on. But, you know, when I started doing this ten, you know, ten years ago, the pools would be twenty-five to thirty. We're getting about ten to twelve applicants these days for jobs, just because there's been so much turnover in the past five years that people haven't hit that mark of being willing to move on yet. You know, we, people should be committing to at least three years. You know, we, people should be committing to at least three years in a job. So it's hard to get those people who are maybe in their second contract. So, but that's what, you know, that's what we're paid to do. And you really don't want to look for volume, you want quality, all you need is one in the end, you know, so. And that's where the communication back and forth with you all will be important.
Easy, right? Thank you very much, appreciate it.
I just had one question. So in, in Mendon, the, the role of the town administrator is essentially defined by job description, it's not by law or anything. My question is, I see that the, the profile that you develop has a lot of the elements of a job description. Does the job description flow into the profile or does the profile flow into the job description and how do those two documents relate to each other?
Yes, the, often it's both, we frequently help the boards refine their job description, then we use that for the profile. And it can be done simultaneously, you may come up with your priorities because it really, you really should have a job description that aligns because you would incorporate that into any employment agreement. So sometimes we do that first and then that feeds into the profile, it's too important not to get it right. So we can want that aggressive schedule for December, but if the board itself doesn't have a, a, a universal understanding of what that job description is and what you're looking for, we're not going to be as successful as we could be. So I would say maybe we have our first meeting to be, let's look at, maybe you all take a look at the existing job description and start thinking about that so that when, and we could recommend a job description based on our meetings with you and you could really kind of vote on both, you know, so. Because you have the, because you're not tied to any bylaw or charter language, you could develop that job description as you see fit now in this moment in time.
Thank you. So I guess the, the, I, I just want to be sure that in, in the proposal, I, I think it's a guide, you're talking about a, a four month timeframe, but I'm, I'm guessing it would be four to six months.
Oh, it wouldn't be six months. No, that would, unless we ran into some major snafu with no applicants or something like that, I mean, we, our goal is to have that profile and have that advertised in September with a deadline in October with interviews preliminary in November, worst case, end of November and final interviews in December, worst case, January, so. I wouldn't, I wouldn't see it going longer than that.
Okay.
Now, I can't promise anything in this world, but we don't have that experience, for example.
This is, this is, this is why I'm talking about Mendon time, four to six months when you recommend. But, but either way, the, the all-inclusive professional fee for this service from beginning can be twelve thousand dollars with two six thousand dollar payments. One upfront and one at the end.
Yeah, we wait, we, we bill you when we get the profile done, we don't ask you to pay before you see that, but.
All right, so. So I, I guess I would be looking for a motion from the board to approve the proposal that, that Mary Accardi has made, a- as presented here for a total cost of twelve thousand dollars.
I move that the select board vote to accept the terms and conditions of the proposal by the Collins Center at UMass Boston for consulting services related to coordinating and overseeing the recruitment of a new town administrator for the town of Mendon. The contract will include a payment to the Collins Center or, will include payments to the Collins Center totaling twelve thousand dollars for said services.
All those in favor? All right. Yes, it was, I'm not sure who, who, who got the second first.
Yeah, they all seconded, so.
Can I just add one question that doesn't?
Not anymore, no.
What's your recommendation for a date we should have that like steering committee ready for you, is that something that we should like get on for our next meeting?
Next meeting.
Okay.
Be advertised that in advance or do we need to talk about it?
That's a good question.
All right. Being for the screening.
Yeah, and then can we say the town's looking to, you know, set up a screening committee, can we get interested people?
Well, do, do we individually think we might have some candidates in mind that we should solicit? If you open it up.
Yes, I would, I would say time is of the essence. So I think we've all, obviously, we've all been considering this, thinking about this. So I, I, I think what we do is collectively, individually give our suggestions to the town administrator and myself and, and we'll come up with a, a committee.
Do, do, sorry.
Oh, certainly it's an open meeting, so anybody who's on here who knows of somebody that recommend to us.
That's my. Everybody's hearing it right now, right.
Do, if we think we have a candidate in mind that would be a strong person to participate, would you recommend we reach out to that and receive if they're interested or just send you the name?
I think you should establish that they're interested, sure, absolutely. And then give it to the town, to the acting town administrator, interim town administrator. And not to say that you're an actor, you know, yes, you are, I know, you said that, I didn't. But I guess I did, I don't know. But we'll come up with a list so that, so we're ready in two weeks. Mary, thank you again, thank you very much.
All right, my pleasure, good luck with Route sixteen and the sidewalk, I learned a lot, you know, so.
And thank you again for the great work that your folks have done with the Collins Center for looking at our highway department and possibly Public Works, we appreciate.
We love this, we love this town and I, I live not too far in Shrewsbury, so I look forward to seeing you in person soon. Thank you, take care, bye.
Just, just, I, I know I, I jumped over the, discussing the World Bank contract. Lonnie was tied up and he's asked to be on the next agenda, so we're gonna, you know, we obviously have it all in writing, but, but we're gonna, we're, we're not going to go back to that tonight. But now, we're looking at, Phil, if you want to come up and talk to us about your first meeting and for the senior center expansion committee.
I'd be happy to. Phil, seven thousand court, I guess, right?
Regularly scheduled visitor.
Regular schedule. I guess last meeting we had summarized my draft notes, we invited, we had an agenda and we formed our first group of the committee based on what the select board made of it. And we had invited, I invited Mike Petrovic, who was an engineer, architect and designer who worked with the town many years ago, I guess. I say many because it's like four or five years ago. He was with another firm, he spun off and did his own business, he has a place in Massachusetts and New Hampshire.
Has he presented to us in the last couple of years?
I believe he did, two or three years.
We're familiar with you.
Okay, but anyway, he came in, talked about his firm, his people, did a good overview of his company. And I think we had, when we talked at the meeting after, was, we'd like to come to the board and suggest that we do what we need to do to move forward on an architect's decision, that's the primary purpose. Whether it be Mike or anyone else, that's the board's decision or how we want to get direction. But I think Mike showed good faith, he's been working with us pro bono for probably past year with Andy, Amy. And he presented a invoice, Dave, I think you, you, or proposal for fifteen thousand dollars, which was part of the budget we approved at the town meeting. Mike, you were at that session too, so.
Yeah, I think the thing with this architect is it was, he was part of another firm, he's actually I think a partner and it dissolved because one of the partners retired. So he creates a new legal entity.
Correct.
Continued working with us. So I think one of the questions that came out and I gave you and I talked about that is, okay, what is the dotting eyes and crossing Ts to make sure that we are soliciting architecture, architect support in the proper way? So we've appropriated money in the last town meeting, so that's there.
That's correct.
Receive one proposal, we don't need to, we need, do we need RFQ, do we just need to make a couple of phone calls?
How much is it?
How much should we appropriate? Fifteen thousand.
Actually, I did do a little research, I spoke to you about it earlier in the week. Under chapter thirty B, which is the Uniform Procurement Act in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, under the contract exempt from thirty B, it includes a section called contracts with architects and engineers and other related professionals. The, the reason for that is, is that generally, when you do construction projects, you hire architects and engineers and it's a different kind of process, in fact, it's called the design selection process. And I did take a look at that and under the design selection process, it, it speaks directly to, if there are feasibility studies, et cetera. And the bottom line is, it says that the key determinator of the decision whether, who you hire is whether the project, the design fee is more than thirty thousand dollars, which it's not. And the estimated project cost is three hundred thousand dollars. So at this point, given that it's not really a construction, you know, construct and build kind of project, this is just a feasibility project. And I think basically, given that criteria under thirty B, that you can choose whoever you want.
And do we have a certain number we need to solicit or can we just move, we've done work for this?
If it was a thirty B, you'd probably have to solicit. Where it isn't subject to thirty B and it's subject to the design selection process, it's, it's saying basically that, you know, if, once you hit those two thresholds, thirty thousand and over three hundred thousand, I think you're going to hit the second one. And, and the first one and the second one, you, you actually go, you say, this is what we want to build.
We get to do the full thirty B procurement, all the rules, bells and whistles.
You don't have to do that.
Not, not yet, not at this, but once.
No, even, even when you get to the next step, it's going to be guided by design.
Okay.
The design selection process.
So in the end, I guess the ask in the committee is that, one, bring it to, we said, we'll make sure the board understands where, but the idea is to move forward so that next, the ATM in spring, there's actually a formal proposal, scope sized design that can be brought to the floor to actually go after the lard dollars.
I, I would basically say this is the best business practice, if you feel that this individual has the skillset and qualifications to do the job and that you're familiar with them and it doesn't exceed those thresholds, then it's basically, you know.
You've been working with this, not you, but the committee in some form.
Some, and the town.
And I think the timeline, Mike indicated that he's prepared to have it ready for the spread.
Okay. And I mean, this also is what we voted on at town meeting, so, so like this is.
Yeah, we just don't want to like dot and eyes and cross and Ts.
Right, right.
I guess.
No, but I agree that it is also, it's appropriate to use it and this is, this is what we. It was framed at that time so that we were going to move forward.
I guess my asking would be just for the approval of the board to spend the money, because that's appropriate, I think. We brought you the information and I'd ask you to do that and then we'll move that process forward.
And I think you have a meeting on Tuesday, the twenty-second. And the idea is if we talk about it tonight and we're all on board, then on the twenty-second, they can actually engage with Mike specifically saying and, and actually start doing, he wants to, he wants to get started.
Wouldn't we make the motion to?
Yeah, you'd have to.
We make the motion to hire him.
Yes, you. Right, yeah, we can't do it, he has names.
And what's the, what's the name of his firm?
Petrovic, MP Architects.
All right, that's what I was, MP Architects.
And I think I sent you the proposal.
David, do that.
Okay.
And I, actually, did I include that with the back, I'm looking.
I've got a hard copy here, I can send it again.
Dave, do you, do you feel the potential motion outlined here sufficient to allow them to take out?
To engage a architectural, or the name of the company, just. For review of the options related to the expansion of senior center and for the development of a final project cost for the services and construction of an expanded senior center. So you basically insert the name of the company.
MP Architects. So, all right, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
And things are moving along well. Yeah, things are going well.
Yeah.
We just need to keep it moving.
Yeah, that is the name of the game, right.
Okay, thank you all.
Off checkpoint.
Yeah. Good job, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I, I spoke with council and actually, our label council, who's a, who's a partner at the firm, I, I know there is a member of the, of the firm that's, that's speaking with Ann Mazar, just finishing up this PNS for the paddock property and we are going to have a final proposal to vote or PNS to vote on, on our September sixth meeting. So, thank you. Yep. And same thing with fifty Milford Street, I don't know, I don't know why we don't have that, but it will be, I have been, we will have it on September sixth, which would be our next meeting. And I had a discussion with council about that, a partner about that yesterday, so. So let's talk about number thirteen, which is, which is the goal setting. You mean the, you, you mean the, you mean the master plan committee? Oh, the Lake Task Force, okay. Well, just to, I, I think what, what maybe what needs to be explained is that the, you know, I, I think it was actually Lonnie, when he was still on the board, came to us and asked if there was a, you know, if, if a lake task force could be created, because it was, you know, the Lake Nipmuck Association really wanted, wanted to have a voice and we felt it would be, exactly. So we, we put this committee together, you know, at, at the request and then, you know, there was a member of that committee that was chosen of, of the Lake Nipmuck, they, they chose someone, right? And the idea was that you were going to, as a group, get together and set your own priorities and come to us. Because the real reason was they felt they didn't have a, they didn't have a voice, you know, within, within government. So we did this, so they do, so it really wasn't, it was actually something that was more of a grassroots thing, it wasn't our idea, we just agreed with it. We can certainly, I guess, give you some direction, but I, my, my suggestion would be, the, have you, have you actually met as a committee?
No.
Okay. Well, what had happened was, what had happened was, all of the members, you know, were appointed. But well, and, and the only one we had to appoint was the one from the Nipmuck, Lake Nipmuck Association, which we did appoint. She was supposed to go get sworn in. And then you as a group were going to meet and set your own goals and priorities. And then, you know, when you actually had that figured out, come to us. Yes, that is correct. Right. It's, no, what, again, well, you need to, you need to figure that out.
So hold the first meeting.
Yeah.
Right.
You got to organize.
Right.
You need to talk to Phil right here.
Right.
Phil just did this with the senior center and he can help you. Who's on this committee? Because I'm on it there.
The easiest way to do, my, my suggestion would be to, to, to go see the town clerk. Because she has the names, everybody's sworn in and she can tell you exactly how to post for your first meeting, because you have to post for the meeting. And then you, you would ba- basically would organize and you're off to the races. Tom, Tom, you have a question?
So I understand all the appointments working by the select board for the task force. I understand even the one remaining one was an individual from the select board.
And I thought.
No, there'll, there'll be, there will be a member because we, what we have to do is, is figure out who's going to be representative of each, of each different board or committee, just like we had somebody for the board of health, somebody for, right, for planning and. Somebody for, right, for planning and, right? So the, so when you, when you get that date posted, you know, one of us will, will be there.
Just to clarify though, for instance, yeah, I covered the school last year. I was not a voting member.
That, that's the point.
Committees, I just attended and if there's an action or support needed, I would take that away. So.
It's advisory.
Yeah.
It's advisory.
Right.
Right.
Just start with that, knowing how the town different works. Just start identifying what your needs and requirements are, you're gonna organize. Where do you wanna go with it?
Yeah, and and you know what, and I would, I would say normally, the, the process would be to, to deal with the town administrator who runs the day to day, you know, running of the town. But what happened was when this was created, um that there was a, essentially a vacancy there. Right.
Right.
So, you know, we're, I I I think we've made some great strides to get back on track or or keep on track.
Yeah, in the meantime, you can email Ellen and she can send you the list of rules and all that good stuff.
Right, but. Right.
Yep, they're the same, they're all the same.
Right. I I think, you know, the most important thing I I think is to, is to find a you know, a space, whether it's that conference room on the second floor or the police station or up here, talk to Ellen, see if there's an open date and time. Then pick a time and get, have you, all your members go there and then you can organize.
Yep.
Oh, sure. Yeah, right. Thanks. Sure.
May come up in conversation on the side of the topic, but it got to, I've heard this, you know, great, started, Spatia was that represented from the select board attend various meetings. And I know that individual that has been attending BOH meetings is not avoiding longer.
Right.
Has the select board decided might replace that individual for select or Board of Health meetings at this point yet or not?
Not yet.
I think we said that's like a topic, if not tonight, future meeting to kind of finalize coverage.
Right.
I gotta say, it's tremendously beneficial having somebody from this group being part of my meeting. Because you folks see things at a different levels than we do sometimes and so long, great. Um, yeah, like input and help out specifically to reafford a situation.
All right. Put it to the top of the priority list.
Thank you for that feedback.
Everything's a priority. I just moved it up.
Yeah. Alright, so with with regard to the, to setting goals, I think there's, there's really three different areas that that this comes from. We have the DLS proposal, which was finished up really last winter. We have this public works proposal, which was presented to us about a month ago. And then we have the master plan committee, which uh you know, uh Bill Ambrosino talked to us about it at the last meeting. So, you you know, we need to um, see a a timeline and a priority of what needs to be. Um, and I I I think of all of them, I think the, 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 the most urgent, um not that, not, not that they aren't all urgent. But is, is the financial piece, but especially where we've got, you know, budget season coming up. And there were a lot of proposals in that DLS, a lot of part of the DLS proposal, I think some of it we can implement, you know, quickly, the rest of it. And I think it's also important with the, you know, what we talked about with the public works proposal, that, you know, we can begin some of the functioning in that direction without changing um you know, ju- jurisdictions or elected versus appointed official, they were told us we could do that. So that I guess it would open up the floor to, I I know some of you have done some work making some specific um suggestions. So. Great. That's an eye test. Right. Yeah.
I would, I would, it would be, would have been better if it would have been. Oh, see that?
That worked.
Wow. You're such a show off.
Yeah.
Do you think last time we said we wanted to talk about the DLS study?
Yes.
For this meeting?
Yes, and you had a, a list of, of questions that you had uh.
Yeah, that that was informational.
Right.
Um, right. So I don't, I don't, I mean, I think.
No, is that Mike? Not this one.
We, the questions were to the state regarding the study. We haven't heard back. So maybe there, there's an action against him.
Yeah.
It's one of those things where somebody, if you, I'd be happy to reach out. His name's Zach.
Zach Lake.
And just, yeah, see where.
I, as a matter of fact, as where, I know you sent that as an email.
Yeah, I think it was a, a string. So Kim had sent it along.
Yeah, but I will. I'm just looking, I'm looking for while I'm sitting here. That one.
While, while, while you're looking, just the uh discussion, we talk about little, just goals and objectives regardless of
Sure.
like the data we have to think about, whether it's the highway study, DLS. I mean, I, I see some fairly uh uh goals that are, that are, that are self evident, right, for the board. Like hire a full time town administrator. That might be a goal we wanna put out there, right? And we can kind of figure out how that happens. But then there's, there's things in the DLS study, I think, is the chair that are self evident and probably need to happen, because it's more operating, a manage, you know, operations management.
And some of it is low hanging fruit, I mean, just saying, they're just gonna do this.
Right.
I mean, I also was doing some organization, at least comments, like some of them are specifically about the finance director and some of them are specifically HR. And so like, to some extent, I wonder about get, bringing them into the conversation about prioritizing these or and.
To, to me, to that point, so I brought up like um multi-year budget capital plan last meeting. And I think David said that he and Jody and they have, sorry. I would almost wanna take it a step further. If there are, Jody's already, I mean, I would suggest that the finance director be the accountable party to start working on something and bring it back.
I mean, so, right, so.
Right.
And actually, I met with her in June and had that, had that discussion.
Right.
Um and she's on board with that.
So, from, from a select board standpoint, just to drive clarity, because I think one of the things that's gonna be important for us to do is to make something like a, a capital plan is gonna require, Jody can't do the capital plan.
No.
Jody can set the framework of what one, what's needed to do one and help coordinate the effort and maybe be accountable to the effort. But she also needs the um, the direction from the board and to the rest of our committees, towns and departments to say Jody's driving this, so she needs your support.
Right.
We so start to, you know, what I guess what I'm saying is, at this time, we say, our finance director is going to be the owner of responsible for driving our capital planning, our multi-year forecasting, that type of thing, and formally say it, it's on your plate, Jody. So when you think about goals and objectives, not just for us, board.
Hmm.
But these are goals, objectives for the people working in town as well too, right? So then we, we just make sure we need to give her the support through this whole process.
Cause I think that, that's the key to it is, it's, we, she has to have the support of the board and the support of of all the stakeholders within town government.
Right.
Cause she's coordinating and driving it, but and we, we, we should, we should also, I think we need to reconstitute, you know, a capital planning committee. Because, you know, as part of the, you know, as an offshoot of the, of the finance committee, but that's also within the DLS study.
Right. Right, so, so it, it, so this would be my expectation, it's, it's sort of talking to Jody, she says, capital planning. But I have talked to her every once. And she's like, well, you need to do this, this and that. It's like, oh, that's great.
I think she's, she's listening right now.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, and 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 have her present that framework back to us, saying, this is the approach. And part of, one of the tasks might be form a capital planning committee. And she might ask the board of select board to run with that and start to solicit that. So she's accountable from a planning standpoint and execution. But she may look for our support to actually take a piece. She might need to solicit volunteers to start to compile, what are the inventory, what are the capital needs across the town operations? I can't expect Jody as a day job to go and sit down with highway and say, here's all my stuff, but, you know.
What's driving that decision?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, you have to take a look at the building. It's a building, you know, if we're gonna need.
Yeah.
We're gonna need new truck three years now. That's the striving. And I think that Jody is approaching it that way. And I have spoken about it and uh, you know, just from her understanding of how, how she wants to approach it, I think she's on the right track.
And and that's the key, is the town administrator and the finance director need to work together to do that.
Do we have to redefine the uh finance administrator's role, or is that, you just, this is something that we just task? Finance administrator. Cause some of that was written into the study.
Right, to empower the finance, right, yeah.
Work power is very loose, eh?
Yeah. And I think, and I think that's what, that's what Da- David is beginning to do, and that's what a, a permanent town administrator will do. They're a professional.
Would follow up with that.
Exactly.
Role description.
Right. And again, th- there was a plan that kind of got derailed a little bit because we lost our town administrator. So
Okay.
We're in the process of replacing it. And I, I think that's an integral part of all of this, but we need to start to, I don't, I don't wanna wait, you know, I.
Do you wanna aim in the right direction?
Exactly.
Someone else can wrap it up.
Right. And I did just send.
It's not a small project.
So.
No.
So you've got to put your heads up. So, you know, what you're gonna be asking her to do and meeting with sister and doing it is that, you know, it's a big project, it's a four to six month project.
Well, then I think, when it came with goals and objectives, a goal would be to probably two fold. One, establish a capital plan.
Uh, yeah.
By, by, you know, and we, and I would say this is where.
It's process.
By the ATM, right? Have that done.
Yep.
Establish a capital planning committee, you know? I mean, that, these are specific, you can call it more objective, I'm not sure what you wanna call them. But I mean, to me, these are things that we wanna target getting done, assign some ownership to it. And then, and that could be us in some cases, not necessarily in this one, but happy to help in terms of this data collection, things like that. Town hall completion, I mean, I think that's one we probably need to have out there for gold.
Well, that's in the, but that would be in the, that's part of this capital plan. Because the piece that we know that we need to do now, which is really the, the, the last piece was the back half of the town hall.
Mm-hmm.
That's capital intensive. It's expensive.
Okay, so then I would, this is my expectation, if Jody is listening, she'd turn around and say, can somebody tell me who the architect is? And maybe somebody can reach out, you know, to kind of reengage. I know she needs to reengage. And we need a sales project manager. I think these are, if it's part of the capital planning process, not the capital planning objective, then I would think Jody should, and David, you should come back saying, how do we wanna execute that? Cause it feels different than just compiling. Capital planning.
Yeah, I agree with that.
You know, we need a project manager. And e- even functionalizing within town hall.
Jody, go ahead.
Yeah, so I was gonna say, um, in the conversations that I've had and sort of how I'd approached this is creating the framework for two, two lanes. One, assessing the capital maintenance needs across the town, i.e. buildings, um town owned properties, et cetera, and assessing needs and being able to project out, we're gonna need a roof over here in the next five years. We're gonna need a new piece of equipment over here, whatever the case is, from a capital need perspective. And then the other portion would be capital projects, i.e. what you guys just talked about, excuse me, with regards to the um town hall building. And then any other projects that are on the horizon, like the senior center. And part of that is mapping that to a capital financing plan that is going to make these things come to pass. And those things need to be prioritized and then planned for, so that we can map the financing to the projects and time it in such a way, you know, even with our debt that's gonna be rolling off in the next couple of fiscal years so that we can keep that level funded within the budget. Um but that's so the project in the next, I would say, four to six months, like Dave is talking about, um we talked about creating that framework and really getting a plan together that is going to be able to be um collaborated with department heads and what the needs are for their particular areas. Um, and what their expertise is, you know, like you said, Mike, um with regards to the inputs in the inventory and sort of some of the on the ground data collection that we need to do to help inform the plan. Um, and then, you know, that sort of final component is, okay, so now that we have the plan, the projects that are the priority, you know, what does the financing plan look like around said project? So what I'm really hoping to be able to drive is creating that framework and really mapping out the necessary steps to help inform what that, that plan ends up looking like. And then being able to make that consumable, not only to you guys as a board, but then to be able to take that, you know, to town meeting or whatever avenue you wanna be able to present that and let that be consumable to the residents um and to the, you know, capital planning committee. And however we wanna engage people in a smart way and not just, you know, throwing bodies at a project, but let's have you know, those clearly defined roles and responsibilities and sort of how we can engage people in the best way possible, you know, to have a good product at the end.
Great. So, again, as I, as I started to say, I, I really see there are kind of three prongs to this. The first one is budget and capital planning, which Jody, I know we talked a little bit about and I know you, you know, when we met and then you've been talking with, with, with the interim town administrator to, to kind of put a framework together for us for that. Um, is everybody in agreement with that?
I, I'm curious what the, the timeline is for this.
Well, Jody, how long would it take you to put together um a proposal?
Um, I mean, so this week's a little tough. I'm actually remote because I'm at um school in Amherst.
Right.
And the next week, I'm, I'm out of the office for the week. But this is definitely a top priority. Um, you know, in conjunction with all the, the financial forecasting and things that we need to do, just as part of the normal um cyclical town business, so to speak. I, I mean, I would think probably within the next four to six weeks, I think that we can have, you know, a project plan um mapped out, at least at a high level, to kind of share across, you know, um what we feel like a, a realistic approach to tackling this is. Um, certainly, you know, the interim town administrator and I will be meeting on this um on a weekly basis multiple times a week, just to kind of, you know, gather our thoughts and put something together. So I would say, within the next four to six weeks, um I think is reasonable to see something and, and how we're gonna tackle this.
Okay, so we'd be looking at having, having you make some kind of a presentation to us at, at our first October meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would say that that's fair.
Um, can I ask a question a different way, Jody? Uh in terms of execution on something like this, not just the framework, is this uh reas- is it reasonable to make this a, an objective or goal for this fiscal year?
To have.
Execute.
You know, and, and, and this is tough. And, and I don't know how much to talk about this online or offline, but, you know, I'm, I'm thirty hours a week, right? And I have the finance director responsibilities as well as treasurer collector responsibilities. So I think I just need to be able to take a realistic view of duties and responsibilities um around all of this and make sure that I'm not over committing and under delivering, like I, I would never want to do that. So I wanna be able to take some time and realistically map out what I think that the level of effort is going to be. In preliminary conversations, Dave and I have talked about, you know, this being like a four to six month project. Um, but at what resource allocation, right? So that's the part we haven't spent a lot of time around and realistically, you know, I'm not gonna be recreating the wheel here either. There's lots of resources out there that we can leverage um to be able to not have to start from scratch. So I think I'll have a better idea of level of effort that's gonna be required once I really, you know, put pen to paper and, and start hammering this thing out. So I don't mean to kind of dodge the question. I'm not.
No.
Do that. I just think, I don't, I, I'm not entirely sure quite yet.
It, it was a loaded question. It it was a loaded question and I asked it for, I asked it for a reason, because I think if you look at this, we probably need to be. Yeah, we've talked about one thing and we're going gangbuster after this one thing. But then we've also got quarterly financial reviews, we've got a multi-year budget forecast. We've got, you know, so there's a lot more things that potentially are gonna be with Jody's.
Right.
Department, so.
Right.
The quicker we can identify what are all the potential things we think makes sense, or we 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 think we need to go after. It'll give Jody a better idea.
Right.
If it's in her department, how does that stuff get, and how, what kinda resources will she need? Cause.
Right.
In the end, like I said, I think it's Jody's driving it, that doesn't mean she's doing.
Right, well, I I'd be interested in.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
All right, I'd be interested in Jody's uh, um, like priorities for the other, like financial director items and sort of like. And I guess like, what's that?
I said, maybe, should we bring it up on the screen and write it down and?
Well, I mean, I don't know that it needs to be like right now, but like, but, cause I, I mean, I guess I don't, I'm, I know, I'm sure Jody's read this as well. Um, but like, but I mean, I'd be interested in like, you know. Like pri- prioritization and also sort of what timeframe and resources you think would. Would be needed for these, cause I I mean, maybe you have those at your fingertips, but I don't.
That's why I was suggesting that we give her this four to six weeks to collaborate with other members of the team. And come up with the October fourth, at the October fourth meeting with a presentation.
Ah, so not just about the capital planning, but about the other things as well.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Got enough time, Jody?
Yeah, no, and I mean, I I think we're talking about a whole lot of stuff right now, um, but I I do think that. The prioritization around specifically the capital planning needs across the town. Are gonna be directly related to things that impact the budget in the next fiscal year, we need to be mindful of those things if we go into budget season. So if we need to figure out, you know, resources and things like that for projects that are already in flight. Um, versus things that can wait, you know, um, those things are gonna, you know, we're gonna need to address that kinda stuff right away. The other stuff that's gonna set ours ourselves up to be successful in future years. You know, those things may take a medium level priority, right? Because maybe they're not in place now and we, you know, we're gonna be able to hammer that out. Um, and then the D L S study and the resources. That they specifically make mention of relative to my position and other things um, related to the financial team. You know, those are considerations that I think that I, I think you guys are in a tough position to figure out what that looks like. Because you you you're not on, you know, in the office day to day, right? So I would definitely be able to provide some insight on where I think, you know, an allocation of resources makes sense. Um, to be able to deliver on some of the recommendations within the study, so I'll be happy to jot my ideas down around that. Um, strictly from an operational perspective and then we can have an open dialogue about, you know, what that means and and what recommendations. I would provide as as far as next steps go around that.
Great, so that's the first piece of this, that's great. So the the uh, the second piece of this is the, again, the public works proposal and the suggestion that there's. Um, you know, how we're gonna approach this between things that the highway department is doing and the board of health. And I was hoping that um, Dave Demers, I could get you to that kinda.
We are involved, meeting, discussing, uh, you know, potential scenarios uh, in terms of. Not so much quote unquote, the department of public works, but uh, they uh. The factory has debated what would, you know, what it should be called, you know, basically a highway uh, parks facility. Yeah. And then two foremen, two uh, like for the parks and facilities, highway department and then membership being.
So it.
One building in there too.
Yes.
Yeah, we want building.
Right, so keeping, keeping that in mind, at that same October four meeting. Could you give us your ideas in a, in a more of a formal presentation at that point?
Yeah, we have been, like I said, Dan was also involved.
Well, if you can be.
Place over if you.
Yes. Well, if you're ready, but we'll talk about it as we move forward.
Question I have on that one is, it had to do with the update that was given. In that, whether we call it, I I don't care what we call it, BP, I mean, is there something specific what DPW means, then that's fine. I call it our town operations, if you will.
Yeah.
But the idea that was presented to us as part of the uh, feedback was, you can bring on the superintendent. Or the director, whatever we call that position, without consolidating or doing organization structure, that person.
Exactly.
Support, the the understanding what are, you know, the boards, we see the needs being, a consolidation of these departments. And here's your current resource, resources available, but that person would also be involved, so I kinda thought. Almost, we wanna engage the column center on helping us do a search for a DPW head.
I think, well, I think the first step is to, we're not there yet, but.
I think that is define what the leadership role.
Correct.
Means.
Right.
So that.
Isn't, isn't that what they did when they did the study?
Uh, no, because they, they did if we were initiating a DPW end to end. But if we're doing a cooperative organization that has a a leader at its head. As opposed to a director, um, that, you know, everybody, that told everybody what to do. That leader has to have a defined role in order for those people who are subordinate to be able to.
I mean, the 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 point is, we have certain, certain roles and certain, certain activities that need to be done within the town. Some of them are being done, some of them, like building maintenance, aren't being done. They, well, they, but they're not.
They always fall for the highway department, they care.
Well, some of them, but but again, it's not, it's not a hundred percent effective, right? So what we really, the the first step, and that's what I'm asking David to do, I think he should do, is to to come up with. What are those things that need to be done, what's being done effectively and what isn't? And then we figure out exactly how we fill those roles and how we change the structure of how it's being done.
You're gonna have to tell, help me understand how the highway study does not tell us their assessment of what's being done and what needs to be done and how it could be done.
Because they don't tell us how the, how the, the building maintenance piece fits and how the highway, how how the. Uh, border health place fits, plus there were elected officials involved, they're like the parks that that need to have input, so.
Yeah, I would say is don't get hung up on, talk about this, DPW usually encompasses.
Water and sewer.
As well.
Right.
So look.
Have that.
Water department.
We do have a very small water. We have like one hundred fifty, hundred fifty residents or households that use water, but aside from that, we don't have this broad. Uh, water and sewer department, and that's usually what a DPW encompasses, so. And I said to Dave when we were talking about it, call this person what you want, call him a superintendent, DPW director, it doesn't matter. It's the DPW party's damn.
But, but, but what I'm, what I'm getting at is the study identified some of the things that need to be done. And I'm suggesting that, that that David, as the interim town administrator, spearhead a a plan about how we would implement that. How we should implement that, that's my suggestion of you.
I agree that experts in the space should deliver us an outline of what they.
Correct, that's what I'm getting to, and I don't know, I don't know how else to do it, then if you have another idea.
Oh, I just, my only, I'd bring in the expert. I mean, the reason we went to elected uh, appointed highway is the, we wanted broader expertise.
Right.
Now, we, do we not want broader expertise from somebody who may have actually run a co-op or a multifunctional department before? To come in and help us, and David, I'm not saying you can't do that, but I'm just saying, if we intend to hire a lead. To do something in the way of a consolidated department or co-op, however you wanna say that. Why wouldn't we want that person brought in to help to figure out how to bring it all together if they have experience in that space? Just curious.
Well, I'm, I'm not saying we don't to have them implemented, but I think, I think who we have here already can identify what needs to be done.
Difference is, we also already had a, like a town administrator in place, so we pretty much knew what we needed and wanted moving forward. And we could align our goals with Collins when they, when they came back uh, to tell us all their stuff. Um, but here, I I'd be guessing as to what we would be.
Yeah, so that's why I think we take, we let them, we ta- we let the people who are already in place, who are already. Um, doing this, whether it's, whether it's a hundred percent on track or not, but take, take the, what Collins did. And and what's being done right now and and put together a high level proposal, the same way we just asked Jody to do it. For the D L S proposal and and the finance, we asked, you know, David and and the others I mentioned. To do the same thing with this whole public works, border health and uh, water and parks, same way. And again, if you just, if you disagree.
Said it, what we asked Jody to do is what she's accountable for doing as the finance director.
Right.
What you're asking all the experts in doing what they're doing is to outline an organizational design. Which may not be their area of expertise, I'm just saying, if you guys wanna do it.
I'm not saying that their input is highly done.
Yeah, I.
Have input, I'm saying, bring in the leaders or at least start that process if we're gonna.
I guess I would be interested in hearing from them, but I mean, it's, it's just going to be part of the discussion.
Correct.
So, so getting recommendations, getting the the high level, like overview from somebody who's.
Right, I'm asking.
Experience, I I mean, I think that would be valuable to me.
I'm asking David to corporate, coordinate it offline, but I wanna see the elected officials, you you know, from. From the parks department, elected officials from the border health. Uh, I wanna see the, you know, our acting highway person, I wanna see them all to get together offline and come up with their input. And then from there, then it should become evident exactly who we need to hire. And Collins is going to help us do that, that is part of.
Sure, did Collins not speak to some of these same individuals to produce a report that they presented to us? I would assume that Collins interviewed all these people.
They did.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Well, do you think that, I I don't think the presentation they made um, is is the whole story, it's just the beginning.
Okay.
Right, I mean, doesn't it potentially also include the recruitment?
Yes, it does, absolutely. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't en- engage.
I mean, I thought the presentation was light.
Right, and and I think, I think it's also a good idea to pull him into that. To pull, to pull the Collins Center into that, because I I guess what I'm saying is, based on what I've seen, but we're we're not ready to hire somebody yet. That's correct, and that's what I'm trying to facilitate here. Bob, you had a.
And something that the planning board pulled together with C M R B C. They had a piece about master plan that specifically spoke to intermodal and public works and.
Well, that, that bring, that brings me to the, to the third piece of this, because. Right, because what we've done is, well, I'm not, I'm not, I don't know whether it does or not, and I I maybe that was the plan. But clearly, we've got the financial piece we just talked about, now we've got the public works piece that we've, you know, we've, we've got. The next step forward for that, the third one is the master plan. And when uh, Billy and Brazino was here a couple of weeks ago, he talked about, he he wanted to start implementing it. And it was explained that, well, this is, this is really something that needs to be taken at this level, but what we need um, that that I haven't seen. Is we need them to present to us exactly to do the same thing that the Collins Center did about this public works. I'd like to see the master plan committee make a presentation to this board to exactly what their ultimate recommendations are. Well, I need them to, you know what, I need them to come in and 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 make their presentation, that's, that's what I'm asking for. Cause I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you, the short answer is, I don't know, but but the, but the, but the. It was almost as if thi- thi- this is, this is a stop along the way, this can't be bypassed, they can't bypass this board. We have to coordinate, that's why the townspeople elected us, that's why we're here to coordinate all of this, you know? And there may be people on that committee are the best ones to implement that, but there's gotta be a, there's gotta be a process, you know, and there has to be a plan. And and we need to to see that plan, so that's what.
That's my point though, is uh, see, we see that study. They, they highlighted the, the positives of what they saw and the negatives and made recommendations on what should or could be.
Yeah, but again, they haven't made them to us, they haven't presented them to us, and that's what, that's what I'm looking for. Is for them to come to us, and you you're right, you know, we 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 pay, we pay a fee to have them work with us and work for us. And do this, and we need them to come in to make their, to make their presentation about their piece, and that's the third piece of this, and I think that's what's missing. So, you know, I'm hoping we can reach out to them and get them to come in, whether it's.
Special meeting, that's a heavy, that's a four hundred page document, that's a heavy lift.
Well, but but it, but again, I'm not suggesting that they're gonna, that that they're gonna lay the whole thing out, but they they can give us a high level overview.
I picked out the recommendations that I liked in that spreadsheet, I said, just saying.
Okay.
So, bef- before we uh, move on, there were some things in the D L S study that weren't specifically about the finance director. And I wonder if we can touch on those or revisit them like at a future meeting.
Sure.
So, I mean, there were, there were a number relating to bylaws, so including like having potentially a committee to. Overview the bylaws and consider a town charter, and then there were also several other recommendations about potentially. Changing or adding bylaws, and I felt like those should be looked at together. It's potentially, there are going to be a number of people looking at bylaws, so I wondered if we, you know, could have a discussion about.
I, 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 I agree with you, um, but I I think also something that the Collins Center pointed out, and I asked the question about, you know. Can we begin moving down the road in that direction, you know, with our current structure? And what you're talking about with bylaws and and part of those bylaws were actually to establish a bylaw that actually defines what a town administrator is. Because that's one of the recommendations in there.
It is.
And and for us to do that, you you know, it would, it would, we need to start now, you know, to have that actually. Make it for the, the ATM in May, if we're gonna, if we're even gonna, if we're gonna, if we're gonna take that recommendation.
Right, well, that's, I mean, right, that's, I wonder when we're gonna talk about that, so, I mean, I guess I. Felt like there were several things related to bylaws here, that if we're gonna have potential, I mean, the, there was a recommendation. To make a committee to review the bylaws, and it strikes me that that would be useful to do before we start. Adding in new bylaws.
Or to have a committee before.
Right, right, I mean, to have.
But I think, but I think we really need to have a discussion about, you know, with priorities and exactly what we're gonna. What we're gonna do right away and what we're gonna look at down the road.
So, I mean, and to that point, a lot of the things from my perspective, they're like, they're required either legislation or town meeting. I was deferring in this fiscal year, I just think that's a hard lift to get those ready to get by in before next spring. So I, my, the way I looked at it, I was like, what are the things that I think are sort of critical, more day to day things?
I, I mean, the, the, the truth is that, you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna take a trip from here to Florida, we don't have to, we don't have to wait for all the lights to turn green to start.
One thing we could do, Mike, is we could go through all the recommendations and either yay or nay, do we think it's, you know. Your term, midterm.
Right.
Longer term.
Done that, his, your.
That's just.
Evaluations, right, no, I mean.
The same thing, yeah.
But I mean, I, yeah, I do think it would be worthwhile talking about, I mean, some of them have a potential sequence to them.
That's true.
So the question is, do we wanna discuss this now or do we wanna give it to these individual, to the, to the people who do the day to day and have them weigh in on it?
Some of this is, don't we need to determine if we wanna pursue it when, and then we could hand it off if we just pursue it?
Right, I mean, yeah, some of these, it's, yeah, like clarify finance committee's mission, it's not clear to me. Like, who specifically that would be?
That would be a bylaw.
Yeah.
Right, but I mean, who would be, would that just be us, I mean.
I think they were being conjunct with the science committee.
Right, so I mean, I guess, well, I wonder, like, you know, I, I'm intrigued by the idea of having people actually. Going over the bylaws as a whole.
Yes, and it, and it was done before, and we had a, we actually had a bylaw committee. Um, that that made, that actually made a bunch of changes and recommendations, and and what typically happened was. Um, it was all, it was all perfect until we get to town meeting, so.
But, but.
But that, that's.
To get back there.
Disagree, maybe we need to reestablish the bylaw committee, yeah.
I, I don't disagree.
On the D L S study, if, I heard two people say, that'd be a good idea.
Yeah, it is a good idea, it's a, it's necessary.
If there's like potentially a lot of research to be done, like, cause a lot of these, you know, other towns will have some of these bylaws. And a bylaw committee could actually do some of that late work.
That's why we wanna.
That's why we wanted a list of all the towns that implemented these.
Yes.
Practices, because this is, the the, some of their stuff's a little, they have a sort of a cookie cutter approach when they're going, because I've read some of their recommendations to other towns.
Yes.
Very similar, so we can get those towns, maybe this bylaw committee. If we set up a committee, though, I know, not a bad thing, I want, makes sense, and it's actually. It can run in parallel, which makes sense to me, but then we need to be very clear as to what their mission and our expectations are to come out of that.
But I want, yeah, maybe, maybe it's a thing that could go on a future agenda to discuss whether we want to.
Yeah.
Form this committee.
Yeah, and I've read, I've read the bio pretty extensively, there's some, you know, things in there that are contradictory. Yeah, and the committee can come up with a list of, hey, these are the problems we found, and this is the file, like, something that's outright wrong, should be drafted. As soon as possible, and then things that could be improved can be, you know, maybe at a future meeting, so we have.
Potentially adding in new bylaws will have like a more solid foundation.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, but, I mean, there's about, maybe I have about ten things that I see from the DLS study that are. I mean, they didn't have that many, a lot of them were tentative, we had study, they had like. Develop annual goals and objectives, we're talking, that's, I'm assuming that's one we do want to, we are pursuing, right?
Yes.
Check it off, we're done.
Well, well, I mean.
I I think the select, that's, we're we're accountable to do that, right?
Yeah.
All right, do we have a target when we want to finalize it? Well, fiscal year is fiscal year, I mean, what do we want to accomplish this fiscal year? Right, we can't do it all.
No.
Right, well, I mean, I also had that, you know, um, my thought about the developing townwide goals and objectives is. It's not just us, I mean, so, I guess I wonder about. Uh getting input from other like departments.
Well, this is why I asked, the third piece of this is to get this master plan committee and CMR PC that's done this. But they haven't presented to us.
Right.
I'd like to get them to present to us.
But I guess I I would like to just consider whether there might be other.
There are.
Other stakeholders, okay, well, anyhow, I mean, so.
Can we just. But 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 this is, I mean, we we can, we can make this as big or small. I hear you, and I think you're gonna expand it, so some collaboration across the town is really the intent behind a lot of these studies, right?
Right.
Can we, can I suggest we start just with some goals and objectives that this select board. Wants to pursue this fiscal year, that way the chair has an easy letter to write for them.
Yeah, and I would like, but I would, and I appreciate that, and it and and we laugh about it, but that is, it's, right?
I've been there, yeah.
Kind of the idea, you know, begin with the end in mind, right? But I would say that. I I think a lot of what we're talking about, this, this master plan committee has thought about these things and talked about these things. And I just, I wanna, I wanna get their input, and I want them to, and I I would think that when they make a presentation, their presentation is going to. Talk about what's most important to them, and I think a lot of it will come out, and I think that we, for us to do that. Without getting their input, I I think is kind of borderline in something for the audience, but.
Right.
So.
This conversation is highlighted. Talked about quite a bit in different ways, and Mike just used the word robbery. And conversation just started, Bob, you know, responsibilities are aligned in different groups and committees and. One talking to another, I'm just wondering, is one of the, we're talking about goals and objectives. If it's worthwhile to kind of try to set, and this was talked about before, kind of implementing a multi-fold meeting.
I remember that.
Regular basis. Doesn't that be every month, maybe once a quarter or something like that, or some like all of those?
It was called, it was called a community cabinet. That was the term, and we actually had a meeting probably about six or seven years ago. That that's what was supposed to happen, and there was just no follow through on it. And it.
So that could be, that could be a goal.
Jody, you have your hand up.
I sure do, and forgive me, because I I um, there might be some background noise here, but. I just wanted to make um a suggestion and a recommendation as to kind of. How you guys tackle some of this um bigger picture objective um. As it relates to the DLS study, and I think that things can kind of get lost when you don't have. A working document, I would recommend a project matrix, something that. Allows you guys the opportunity to not only identify very clearly what your goals and objectives are as it relates to. The DLS study, um but. Kind of isolating things that are operationally driven, which the DLS study lends itself to, is a lot of things as it relates to the operation. And then there's sort of the bigger picture stuff that are the needs, wants, desires, future direction of the town. Um as it relates to the capital commit, uh planning committee, the economic development committee, and. Other things that are more um, you know, driven as to the future of the town, right?
Well, and I think CMR PC and the Master Plan Committee, you know, it should have included some of that, and I'm sure it does.
Yep, and so I guess, but what I'm recommending is that if there was a project matrix of some sort that would. Allow you guys to track um along with, you know, the the town administrator that could. Identify the lead for said goal, right, so now let's, let's say Brendan, I'm picking on you for a second, let's say. You know, he has a passion for XYZ, and he's gonna kind of lead the effort around, you know, said, the implementation of said goal. Um or, you know, you you task me as the finance director to be the lead and report back on, you know, next said goal. And so on and so forth, you're gonna be able to measure it, you're gonna be able to report back on it, you're gonna have clear deliverables and what success in that area looks like. And so I think that unless you have something that can kind of organize and track, um you're gonna feel like. You know, things are gonna get lost, so again, just big picture. Structure organizing, you know, some of these goals and objectives, I think, would be successful in a working document.
And and I think to Jody's point, when you read the master plan, that's aspirational, that's a, that those, that's a framework. And for the for the town to aspire to, right? Things like a capital plan came out of that, or the park shed came out of that, because certain people are on those committees, right? But those are things, if you had heard multiple times, the DLS study, I like the word operational, because when you look at their recommendations. The DLS study is clearly. Well, and it's it's more, it's management best practices, but it falls under the auspices of the select board and those. Most of those departments that report up to us, right? So that's why I kind of think, when we start about doing the DLS study tonight, last meeting, I said that makes sense, because we actually don't need to engage. The world yet, because there, there's low hanging fruit in this list that, you know, we. Touched on, you know, that we should really just kind of farm out and make sure we get it. Yes, yay or nay, like town, a town charter right now, I'm like nay for FY twenty four, I would park that.
Right.
That's why, and that's why I I'm suggesting that we, we give Jody and 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 David. Some time to to put together, because they're the ones that are gonna, operationally, they're gonna do this. That they put it together and present it to us, so we can decide what we wanna, what we wanna tackle.
Well. I mean, I'll defer to David and Jody, whether or not. You want direction from us, or are you gonna give us direction on what we decide to go for recommendations?
Well, I think we're gonna make the decision, but we need to, I I want to see some input from them, what their, what their ideas are.
Yeah, I I'm just, I'm thinking, you know, goals and objectives as it relates to operational improvements. Is is, again, like I I talk about things in lanes, but that's sort of running towards. You know, improvements to the operation, right, the capital plan has everything to do with the finances. And making sure that we're planning accordingly for capital needs, whether it's maintenance or projects. And then, you know, a a a future look um into the next ten years, what's our long range financial plan, right? So, these are, these are definitely all different efforts, they're aligned, right, like they, they. Marry together at different intervals, but I think that, you know, a working matrix around. Specific goals and objectives as it relates to the operation is gonna be an important working document to keep you guys all. You know, in the know about where you are as it relates to said, you know, goal and objective, and then. The other framework around the capital plan and the long, long range financial plan are two other. You know, separate initiatives, but again, kind of all married together, so I think, you know, I think what's best to do at this point is to let. You know, let this marinate a little bit, and then David and I can meet when I'm back in the office. And we can kind of hammer out what we think is a good next step to kind of putting some of this on paper to. To create actionable items and trackable, measurable, um so that we feel like we're making some, some good progress. Um without things getting lost, that would be my recommendation.
This is my last thing I'm gonna say on this, and in Jody, I'm trying to make yours and David's life easier. Because thing, there are things on here, we can actually park if we don't want to do it this year, like town charter. Like succession planning, to me, that the next TA, I would be charged with. Build a succession planning process for the town operations, but we can take two things right off the list right now. Park them and say, don't even think about those, right, I guess that's what I wanted to get to, saying, what is it we want to. Charge them for thinking about so they can give us ideas, but we haven't gone through the list, you know, I mean, I'm thinking there are things we can go through here and say, yay or nay. To kind of start to bring clarity to it, no, all right, now I'm really, that is the last thing I'm gonna say. I'll let you guys continue.
Well, you said it was the last thing you were gonna say. So David, can you in, please, reach out to the Master Plan Committee and CMR PC? And have them come to this meeting in October? So they can make a presentation to us? And maybe it'll force them to put their thoughts together with a priority. All right.
I can't help myself, I would just say this, when I say it's the last thing I'm gonna say, I leave it open for people to weigh in, nobody's saying anything. Just say, Mike, that we're not gonna do that, and I will.
Oh, you mean, you want to like so.
Yeah.
Like.
But if you want to do it, I gotta make you want to do it, you know?
Right.
I just, I'm like, I'm talking, like, that's why I brought the list.
Right, I mean, I've been. Yeah.
Alright, so you thought we were gonna go through it?
Yeah, I think it.
I thought.
I think it would be. Interesting to at least.
I I have, listen, I I I'm leaving this for us to 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 discuss it. If you have, if if you want to go through that list and and take some things completely off the table right now, and just tell them not to even. Go down that road, I have a feeling they won't anyways, because it's not, it's not within their, in other words, it's not within Jody and David's purview to. To put together a bylaw committee or to um write a town charter. Um or or any of these, you know, bigger things, I'm talking about the immediate things that they need to tackle now to actually get. To get moving in the right direction, but feel free to 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 go through the list, and 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 we can talk about them and and do a yay or nay, I'm fine with that.
Like developing a team that's approached to see.
Is gonna be helpful.
What's that?
I said even a due diligent prioritization is gonna be helpful, assuming that. Everything on the list is something that you're gonna actually want to do at some point, just high, medium and low prioritize it. And then from there, we'll be able to, you know, drill down on what it, what it is that you think you can tackle. You know, with our help, with, you know, other people's help within this fiscal year, things that you're gonna save for future years.
Well, I guess, I guess what I'm saying, Jody, is we can talk about this now and 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 tell you, or. I can ask you to, you to, you two to look at it and come up with with your idea of it first. But but we'll do it in either direction you want.
Yeah.
I mean, I I'm I'm opening up to the committee, I'm not, I'm trying to facilitate here, so if if. If the 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 other four of you want to go through this right now, we'll go through it right now and and knock it out if you want.
I mean, it strikes me that there are some things that are not directly under the finance director, that it might be. Worthwhile to like, see if we can. Take them off.
Well, let's talk, well, let's.
The HR things, for example, like, are those things that you could bring to the HR person now, like to ask. Her do the same thing, looking over those HR recommendations.
Well, my, 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 my original hope was to have the town administrator to take that and and dole it out.
Okay.
To those areas, and then, and then again, it got interrupted because.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
So. That's really what I'm trying to 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 get to, where the, you know, the 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 paid. Working professionals are the ones who are actually.
I can't see it, I'm right here, so.
Yeah, that's.
These guys are like.
Yeah, I know.
Also getting late.
Yes.
And I say this, this is.
The point of diminishing returns and terrible meetings.
Right, so I'm gonna, I I I'm gonna table it, table it for tonight, and just, let's leave it with what we talked about. For that meeting, and in the meantime, I think what I ask you to do is take. Both what Brendan has put together and and the DLS study, and I actually sent something out to Zach Blake to have him give me a call. And I I think we need to get it on, on our next meeting, that we're gonna go through these specifically. And then we'll come up with, because again, they're not gonna meet until, you know, the first meeting in October to present to us, but in the meantime, we'll go through this. And then we'll give them some more specific direction, so they'll know which things that they.
We're not meeting at the end of the month.
Now, the, and our next meeting would be the first one in in September, because usually we we meet the first and the third.
I ask you to merge my spreadsheet with yours.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then set it up in landscape with, it was twelve point.
It's good on my screen.
Right.
That's, that's right. Uh and put in. Some public.
All right, town administrator report.
Could I make a recommendation here, give me time, and the fact of getting executive session after this?
Sure.
Just put that in a memo to you tomorrow.
Absolutely. Anybody object to that?
Thank you.
Excellent.
All right. All right, then let's um. I'm gonna make a motion that uh I move the select board enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter thirty eight, section twenty one eighty two. To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel, to conduct elective bargaining. Sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, fire chief requires a roll call vote, Morali, aye?
Yes, aye.
I still moved in.
Well, it's a roll call vote, so.
Pooter, aye.
All right, we're in executive session, you can, and we're, and we're um, we're only going to um. We're only gonna come back into uh public session to adjourn.
Thank you, Jody.
Alright, thank you, everybody, have a great night.